We'd like to start the meeting. Can everybody take their seats, please? That's kind of cool, I mean.
What do you think, Rachel?
I don't think this is working. Is it? Yeah, okay. Good. All right. Welcome, everybody. Nice to have a crowd. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on March 14th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Okay. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have minutes from our meeting that was held on February 25th. May I have a motion and second to approve the minutes from our regular public meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Then we'll take a roll call, please.
All in favor. Do any abstain? All in favor. Any abstentions at the roll call?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. We're recognizing a lot of correspondence, and I would just like to say off the top that we received a lot of correspondence in our email, and we received a lot of input from our website link in regards to the referendum. And we haven't had a chance to answer all of the letters because we have been in non-stop meetings since Tuesday night. And what we're hoping to do tonight is to answer all of those points. I can assure you that everybody on the board has read all of the input, and we'll be discussing all of that tonight. So with that, I apologize. It's just been a really tough week. We have next to go to our superintendent for a report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin this evening by sharing some great news from around the district with the board and the community. On March 4th, our Hillsborough High School boys' ice hockey team competed for the NJSIAA Public A Ice Hockey Championship title at the Prudential Center in Newark against the Morris Knolls Golden Eagles. Although the Raiders lost to the Golden Eagles, this was an amazing finish to a fantastic season, a record-setting season for this team. Congratulations to the coaches and the players on this successful hockey season. This past Friday was opening night for the Hillsborough High School Theater Spring Musical, The Addams Family. The set, the show, the music, the actors are all extraordinary. There are still two more opportunities this coming weekend to see the show. Tickets are $12 and are available online at the door for the 7:00 PM performance on March 22nd and 23rd. Break a leg this weekend, Hillsborough Theater cast and crew. And earlier this month, eight members of the Hillsborough High School National Honor Society visited the Hillsborough Middle School to give a presentation to approximately 270 8th grade students who expressed an interest in learning more about advanced placement classes, GPAs, and general information about the high school experience. The National Honor Society students created the presentation, were excellent speakers, and provided a safe and open environment for 8th grade students to ask questions of older students who have been through the high school transition and can share their experiences. Thank you who made this presentation possible, including students Rahas Shordia, Hannah Kim, Megan Patel, Elaine Koo, Lindsay Baum, Mahitha Vivek Vedant Shitarwar, and Rupak Stephen. Thank you also goes to the Hillsborough National Honor Society, Elizabeth Zenak, and Hillsborough Middle School Principal, Dr. Joe Chabelski, and the Hillsborough Middle School Counselor, Amy Casa Grande, for their work in making this assembly possible. This past week, the New Jersey Department of Education released the annual school performance reports for all public schools in New Jersey. Part of the state reports includes a summary score, where schools receive a numeric score from 0 to 100. I am pleased to say that Hillsborough schools were ranked well, including Hillsborough High School ranking third highest in Somerset County, as well as Hillsborough Elementary School, which was the highest-ranking school in Somerset County. Sunnymead and Woods Road Elementary School were in the list in the county's top 10 elementary school, and Woodfern Elementary in the top 15. The success of all of our schools is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our students, teachers, staff, administrators, and parents. Let's give all of our schools a big round of applause. And at this time, I have a brief presentation on the 2019-2020 tentative budget. I'd like to start to talk about the budget development process. In order to maintain our class sizes, our staffing levels, and fee structures, we needed to spend an additional $5 million, approximately $5 million, from this fiscal year, fiscal year 19's budget. That represents an increase of the total budget of about 3.48% off of current year's expenditures. The cost drivers were no different than in previous years, including salary, benefits, special education costs, and transportation costs as well. What was very different this year was the revenue side. The revenue side for the fiscal year 20 budget was significantly reduced, and it was reduced for three main reasons. The first reason was what's called the healthcare waiver. Our healthcare expenditures increased this year by 12%, and typically, you can waive that or raise the levy in order to cover costs above 2% for healthcare costs that rise beyond that. But that happens if you're in the state health benefits plan. If you're not, it's indexed to the state health benefits plan. So this year, the state health benefits plan had a, it was a record, actually, amount of increase. It was very small. So we could not take a healthcare waiver that we took the year prior to. And that had a significant effect on those revenues, over $1 million just there alone. Fund balance, which is surplus, that's part of our revenues for our budget, those surpluses have been depleted from approximately 2.7 million to about $800,000. That's a significant reduction, and those reductions can be explained in three areas. First of all, again, rising costs of special education programs. By the way, these are very important investments that we make for the neediest children that attend our schools. We're very proud of the work that we do with our special needs children. We're actually a center of excellence. People actually move to Hillsborough Township because of the quality of our special education program. But those costs continue to exceed 2%, not just in Hillsborough, but across the entire state. The percentage of children with autism, if you've been reading in the papers, the CDC just came out with a very large study that now approximately 1 out of every 26 3rd grade children in the state of New Jersey boys are classified as being on the autism spectrum. These are challenges that public schools have never had to face before, and the amount of need is significant, and those continue to climb above 2%. Also, what depleted our surpluses was transportation associated with special education, too. And the third area is maintaining and fixing our HVAC system. Spent close to $1 million last year in maintaining our program, in maintaining heat and cooling in our schools. And if you remember, the year prior, we had wings that during the winter months were freezing. That, thank goodness, didn't happen this year because of the investments that we made, but those depleted our fund balance. And the last was state aid reductions. In the 2009 school year, we were almost $1.8 million more than what we are today, and our enrollment continues to go up, not down, up. And yet, the state feels that we are overfunded by millions of dollars. That's because the state calculation indicates that the wealth in this community is going very high, is really increasing at a significant rate. There's a statistic called the local fair share, which is what, in the state aid terminology, says this is how much you should be taxing your community. Our local fair share for fiscal year 20 is approximately $5.5 million less than what the taxation is. So that is what we have learned through the state aid notice that we just received about a week ago. We received a state aid notice. So again, just to summarize, revenues decreased by millions. Our expenditures were pretty much on the same glide path, about $5 million increase. As a result, we felt that we needed about $135 million in order to run the district and just maintain programs, not do anything significantly innovative, not add additional programs, but just to maintain our level of staff, maintain our fee structures, maintain our busing, would cost us about $135 million. But our revenues this year are capped, can't go above $130 million. So as a result, the board went out to the community and asked for a levy adjustment. Levy adjustment of $5 million for what we called financial stability, which would have addressed this particular issue, and also to fund full-day kindergarten as well. But as we all know, the referendum failed. As a consequence of the referendum, the board is now continuing to consider the following: staff reductions of approximately 50 positions, increasing fees in technology, pay-to-play, and building use, and decreasing courtesy busing. No decision, no final decision has been made at this point, but we will make a final decision as we complete the budget development process, and a final budget will be approved by this board on April 29th. In between that time, these six weeks, we are asking for the community to let us know what you think and what you feel and what you recommend. We have on our website, and this is a screenshot of our website, a place where you can just click and put your input in. That input goes to every member of the school board. We've already received close to 60 individual recommendations from members of our community and our staff, and we're interested in hearing from you. If you can't come out to a board meeting, like those of you who are on tonight, you can go on our website, if you're watching our video, and please click on that green icon that says "We want to hear from you." This is on the front page of every homepage on each school's website, as well as the district website. We are always working at managing our costs, including our employees contributing to healthcare. Our employees currently contribute close to 20% of healthcare premiums. We also generate revenue. We have a revenue-generating program for children who remain with our kindergarten for a full day. We charge tuition for that. It's called Children at Play, the cap program, and that generates about $200,000 worth of revenue annually. Mr. Mahmoud works with the county office and other enterprises to do purchasing agreements where we enjoy economies of scale, and we lower the cost of individual supplies and materials. We also look at all opportunities, both federal and state. This is a federal program called E-Rate that helps us to manage technology expenditures. And this year, we instituted additional controls for overtime as well. Behind me is a chart that is available. All of this data is available on the Department of Education website. It's commonly called the Comparative Spending Guide. It lets us understand how our spending compares to like districts and to the state average. What this chart shows behind me is how our spending per pupil compares to like districts and districts throughout the state. And what it basically says is that we spend, per pupil, approximately $657 less than the average. Now, if you multiplied the amount of kids we have times 657, it's a big number. It's close, it's a little bit under $5 million. And that's to spend the average. That's not to spend above average. That's to spend the average. We also look annually at total administrative costs as well. On this chart, you can see like districts and our district group, according to the Department of Education, our K-12 districts with 3,501 child plus and over. And as you can see here, this chart, we spend, on average, per pupil, $333 less on total administrative costs than the state average, and also well below like districts. Well, could this have been avoided? Is a question that I get asked quite a bit. The answer is yes, it could have been avoided. One way to avoid it is we could have done these reductions, these cuts, every single year for the past five or six years, increasing class sizes slowly, increasing fee structures slowly. We decided not to do that. We decided to maintain our current level of staffing as we went through this. Each year, I spoke with the board, and I continue to do so, about the unsustainability of our process when there's costs that are outside of the board's control that exceed the 2% property tax cap. And this was the year that things came together, and we had that $5 million hole in our budget. Another way that this could have been avoided is if the state of New Jersey funded us fully in the 12-13 school year. We were actually an underfunded district by $13 million just six years ago. Now, we're an overfunded district. But back then, we were an underfunded district. If we were funded at that rate at that time, we would have had loads of ability to not only decrease our property taxes, but also fund other innovative programs and not be in this particular position. The other issue is special education funding. And I've spoken about this before. Right now, the state aid formula does not allow for districts to be compensated for the children that they educated who have special needs. You're compensated for the average, the state average, and the state average classification rate this current year was 14.92. This year, sorry, in fiscal year 20, next year, the calculation went up about 15%. We're about a point above that. When we did the math, if we were funded for the children that we have, we would have another $1.5 million. That includes extraordinary aid and formulaic aid. Every single year, we are underfunded in special education. And by the way, our classification rate at about 16% is not because we are overclassifying, it's because families move to our community for the quality of our program. See, if we, if you are below that state average, you're a winner. You get state aid for children you don't have. If you're above that average, like we are, you're a loser, and we don't get the aid for the children that we're educating, not because we're overclassifying, because we do a great job. We should not be punished for doing a great job. But that's what's happening with the state aid currently. And of course, last but not least, if the referendum passed, we wouldn't be in this situation right now. So what more can be done? First is communicate to our legislators. I've had an opportunity to speak directly to Roy Fryman, our Assemblyman, on Friday. I spoke with Andrew Zwicker, our Assemblyman, on Saturday, and today, this morning, I spoke with our Senator Kit Bateman. I've explained to them our situation. They're well aware of it. And in fact, two weeks ago, the President of the Board of Education and myself met with the Speaker of the Assembly, Assemblyman Craig Coughlin. And we talked with him and his senior staff about the unique situation in Hillsborough, and asked for increased funding for us. I have also met with President Steve Sweeney, who's the President of the Senate. He understands Hillsborough's situation. I met three weeks ago with members of the Murphy administration, including the Deputy Chief of Staff, the Director of Intergovernmental Relations, Intergovernmental Affairs, and his Senior Policy Advisor as well, to reinforce that Hillsborough is unique when it comes to these type of things. And each of those groups and those people, those decision-makers, know and understand what we're doing. I'm actually testifying on Wednesday of this week at the Assembly Budget Hearing to share directly with the leaders in the Assembly Budget Committee about what we need, and I think it's very important that my voice is not the only voice advocating. So please make sure that you contact your legislators and talk with them about the importance of making sure we're fairly funded in Hillsborough, and hopefully, get an adjustment before the end of this year. Second part is emergency aid. The Governor was interviewed, I think it was last week, and he indicated that he understands some of the plight of some districts throughout the state, that there may be a need for extraordinary aid or emergency aid allocation. Hearing that, we contacted our county office and asked the Executive County Superintendent to contact DOE head leadership to see how we can do that, because we will apply in a heartbeat for those emergency aids. We were told by the Assistant Commissioner, Kevin Deemer, who's the Assistant Commissioner for Finance, the highest-ranking DOE official that deals with money, that there is no emergency aid. So it's very important that we put pressure on legislators to have that allocation ready to go, and make sure that the Governor and the DOE are saying the same things. We also need to make changes to the state aid funding formula. Any funding formula that shifts local fair share by millions of dollars year after year, that type of volatility is very, very difficult on taxpayers. It is extraordinarily difficult on kids, on school districts, on staff, and certainly on the Board of Education. We need predictability within our state aid funding formula, and those things need to be adjusted. And finally, we have to fully fund special education aid. And there are bills in both the Assembly and the Senate to do just that, and I encourage you to share your voice on those issues as well. We also have challenges coming up in the future now. One of those challenges is we're going to have state aid reduced over the next five years after fiscal year 20. So each year, we're going to be faced with a hole in our budget of whatever that's going to be. We calculate, we estimate it's going to be over $1 million each year, and that's going to be a struggle. That's going to be a challenge for us. And the second is to try to replenish our surpluses, to bring that surplus back up to about 2.7 million, where it had been for many years. Those are important. I have a graphic here that shows winners and losers in state aid. There shouldn't be winners and losers in state aid. We've never been a state that says we're going to educate some children at the expense of other children. We've been a state that educates every child, and every child well. Unfortunately, the policies and the, the school funding formula and the way it's being adjusted now, there's clears winners and losers. So this is our tentative budget. Our tentative budget is broken into three different areas: the general fund, which is our operating expenses, grants and entitlements, including federal grants for children with special needs, as well as children at risk, and debt funding, funding for our debt aid. You can see that the general fund is only going up about half a percent. When we add all of those items, we're going from $129.9 million to $130 million, an increase of 17 one-hundredths of a percent. That's only $226,000 above what our current expenditures are. So that means we need to reduce expenditures, obviously. Now, the tax cap, this is something you may have seen before. We're allowed to go up 2%, but no more than 2%. That's 2% on the levy there, 1.9 million. That's for both Hillsborough as well as Millstone. Our healthcare waiver went from about, I think it was 1.8 last year, 1.6, 1.8 million, all the way down to about $300,000. But we have a new waiver, and this is a new adjustment. It's called the enrollment adjustment, and that's because our enrollment is going up. So we get a little bit more, about $200,000 more. So what impact does that have on the homeowners in Hillsborough? There will be an annual decrease on a home assessed at $400,000 and not reassessed, of $50 for the year. Tax levy will increase slightly above 2%, as I showed you before. The tax rate is now going to be 1.595 on $100 of assessed property value. You multiply that times your assessed property value, move the decimal place over, too, and that's how much you pay in school taxes. And that's actually going down. Our tax rate is going down by .77%. That's Hillsborough. Millstone looks a little bit different. The levy is increasing about 2.5%. Tax rate is now 1.869 on $100 of assessed property. Tax rate is increasing by 2.37, and a home assessed in Millstone at $400,000, it doesn't change, doesn't get reassessed, will now see taxes increase by $173. We have received some questions about the budget documents, and when can the community actually see that budget document? Well, the board has to approve the tentative budget first, and then after it's approved, Mr. Mahmoud works with the county office to finish the process to get county office approval. All districts in the state of New Jersey must advertise their budget no later than April 19th, and we will be working closely with the county office to expedite the approval and release of those budget documents so that the community can get it as quickly as the county approves them. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. I don't really want to belabor the point about our district's spending policies, but I think it's very important to know that besides our lower-than-average spending per pupil, it's very important that people understand where we put our priorities. And I put together this chart, which compares the state average in the operating group of K through 12 with Hillsborough schools, and what Hillsborough schools' rank is in all of those categories. And Dr. Sasan was kind enough to color-code it for me into highest to lowest quartiles. As you could see, highest-spending quartiles, represented in red, do not exist on this page. However, being in the third-lowest quartile in the state are the items in orange, and those invariably fall into classroom instruction, support services, and salaries in those areas at the top of the page. As you could see, in those areas, we are 55th of 98, 72nd to 98, 74th of 98, and 58th of 98. I'm proud to say that that means that we put our money where we should put our money in terms of teachers and support staff for our children. Honestly, the fact that our teachers are highly paid is because they are highly qualified and experienced. I shouldn't take for granted that everybody understands that teachers are paid on a salary guide. That salary guide moves based on higher education, various different steps along the guide for different types of higher education, and it also goes downward based on years of experience in this district. I want to say very clearly, those are valued by Hillsborough Township. I would also like to say that at the bottom of the page, when you see ratio of students to classroom teachers, that's also a very good number, because that's very important to us, and the median teacher salary is important to us, and the ratio of students to education support personnel is very important to us. Moving back up to the chart, the green areas, which are actually in the lowest quartile of the state, classroom general supplies and textbooks, classroom purchase services and others are 11th of 98 and 6th of 98 in Hillsborough Township. That means that we save money when we can, and I know that a lot of teachers put out money from their own pockets for supplies, and we have been fortunate to have a technology initiative that allows us to save money on textbooks, and it's showing. initiative that allows us to save money on textbooks, and it's showing. Our administrative costs per pupil are also in the lowest quartile, 19th out of 98 in terms of administrative costs per pupil, 15th of 98 in terms of legal services costs per pupil. Thank you, Vic. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, all of our supervisors. And that is certainly within any kind of standard for administrative services in the public sector or the private sector, something to be proud of. Our total operations and maintenance of plant is 7th of 98. A little embarrassed by that, but our guys do a fabulous job, and there'll be some good news about that tonight, too, on the agenda. And our extracurricular costs are 5th of 98. And I know that a lot of people are looking at pay-to-play as an area where we could save money. I suggest that the money that's being spent right now is not that very much. And once again, we have a robust extracurricular program and sports program, and we managed to do that within the confines of this budget and remain very efficient and effective. So getting back to ratio of students to administrative personnel, state average is 159, our average is 219. Ratio faculty to administrator, state average is 15, and Hillsborough schools are at 22. So that number is fourth-lowest in the state. That is a very impactful number because administrators not only supervise and evaluate our staff, but they guide them, they mentor them. These are important numbers, and these are not numbers that I have made up or anybody in this administration has made up. These are numbers that come from the state extrapolated from our budgets, which are documents that are signed off on by the Board of Ed and signed off on by many licensed people who put their input into that. So I really would appreciate if people would understand that our priorities are in the right place. So with that, I think we can move on to committee reports. Dr. Swasan, you want to give the education report?
The Education Committee met on Thursday, March 14th with all four members in attendance. It was a very long meeting, as one would expect with everything going on last week. We were able to recommend some items unanimously for the agenda tonight. The first was the Nursing Services Plan, and I'd like to draw the board's attention to the recommendations in there for staffing. The next was a book approval for The World According to Humphrey, which is a K through 4 book recommendation. We also reviewed several policies and regulations, some of which are on the board agenda tonight. The first on the board agenda tonight is the second reading for transgender students. And then for first reading, we have the practice and preseason heat acclamation for school-sponsored athletics and extracurricular activities as well as the service animals policy. We did discuss a policy and regulation on administration of opioid antidotes during school hours and after school. We referred some questions back to our lawyer about that, so that is not being brought forward this evening. We also heard a presentation from Mr. Carey, the principal here at Otten Road School, about a program that they piloted for three weeks in January and early February called WIN, which also stands for What I Need. They adjusted the school day to allow for a 20-minute period at the end of the period back in homeroom that students could use for consulting with teachers, other classmates on projects, getting ahead on their homework, and other projects and activities or doing some choice reading. That was a pretty impressive project and well-received by students, staff, and parents, and so the board, the Education Committee, agreed with the recommendation to implement it for the whole of the fourth marking period. We'll do a review after that to determine the future of that program. And then we discussed the results of the referendum and the budget. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, would you like to do HR?
Certainly. If you remember, at our last board meeting, we accepted resignation of Mr. Fulpie as our director of Human Resources. So we began our meeting with a discussion of an interim replacement. Given the time of the school year and the failed referendum and the impact of that, it's very critical that we get someone to backfill that position on an interim basis because there will be a lot of human resource issues to be managed as we discuss candidates and a financially responsible way to fund an interim, and we're still working on that. We also discussed that our acting, our maintenance supervisor through Aramark has been given a very nice promotion for him. Unfortunately, that means he's leaving. So we discussed, and we unanimously recommend, the promotion of our current foreman, maintenance foreman to supervisor. Did I have that correct?
Yes, he'll be the buildings and grounds supervisor.
And the current shop steward is promoted to foreman on an interim basis until we can backfill those positions also. And then the rest of the evening, we discussed the failed referendum and where that would be impacting us across our schools and programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will give the Operations Committee report. We had some professional services appointments that were discussed. One was for risk manager and municipal finance advisor, and we'll be bringing a recommendation forward at our next committee meeting. And then we also looked at potential health insurance brokers, and we interviewed three companies, and I'm not quite ready to make that announcement yet because we're still looking into some details, but hopefully we'll have that information at a subsequent meeting and certainly by our May 2019 organization meeting. We looked at certain policies in terms of commercial driver-controlled substances and alcohol use, and a policy and regulation in regard to the eligibility of resident and non-resident students. We reviewed the audit for the district, which was delayed because of some state issues, but we have it now, and I'm pleased to say that we had no negative audit recommendations for the, I mean, for many years, we have not had audit recommendations, and we're very proud of that. We then looked at referendum fallout, and we had a very robust discussion about a lot of good ideas. And, Chris, you stole my thunder. We have unfortunately lost Wilson Quintero, who was our Buildings and Grounds Director of Facilities. He was an employee of the Aramark Corporation, and I'm pleased to add to what Chris said that we're promoting two of our guys from inside to the two Buildings and Grounds positions that need to be filled, and those will be shown as new appointments on our agenda later on. Do not think that this is a cost factor because we are getting a refund from Aramark, which will pay for that. So we are moving those positions in-house for the moment at least, and we'll see where that goes. And we had a discussion about facility rental fees as one of the potentials for generating revenues so that we don't have to lose additional staff people. So there will be more to come on that soon. And that was it. In terms of the Governance Committee, which is the committee chairs getting together, we basically spent a very long time talking about the output from all of the committees in terms of what our plans should be going forward in regard to the referendum. And as everybody has said, they are still in process. We've had less than a week to absorb the impacts, but we're getting a better handle on it every day, and we're going to do the best we can to keep impacts away from children. So that is it for me, and I will now continue. We're going to take comments from the board and the public, but tonight, well, I'm going to ask the board to hold their comments. Did you have a point of information?
I just want to talk about municipal lines.
Oh, okay. Jane is our Municipal Alliance representative and has a committee report on that.
First of all, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that the Municipal Alliance addresses substance abuse, especially amongst our young people, and there's going to be an upcoming documentary called Angst, and it will be on May 9th at 7:00 PM. And they want, they decided to have it in May because May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it will be shown at the municipal building, and parents and children are welcome to see that documentary. They're also planning on having youth mental health first aid training, tentatively will be held on two Saturdays in June, June 15th and June 22nd, four hours each day at the municipal building, and that's open to everyone. And our next meeting will be Friday, April 12th at 9:00 AM in the municipal building, and everyone's welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Thanks for reminding me, as predicted would be necessary. Before I forget, I would also like to apologize profusely. We were supposed to have a presentation by two groups of schoolchildren. One was from Woodburne and one was from Hillsborough Elementary School, and I am so sorry that we had to postpone it, given the fact that we were expecting a large crowd and that we expected a lot of public comment tonight. So I look forward to seeing you at a future date, and that's some of the best things we do at board meetings, right?
Agreed.
Right. So with that, on the action agenda, we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now that you may speak about any item that's listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which, given the crowd tonight, we're really going to have to enforce, so please confine your comments if you can. Please understand our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions but are rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, either I or the superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. I'm going to add to that preamble that we're going to do public comment first. In the past, we've sort of mixed it with board comment because I think it's really important for us all to hear from the public first, and we can comment afterwards. Okay? So with that, public comment. Step up, state your name and address.
Good evening. Thomas Zabili, 9up and Ashanet Court. Just a quick question I had. So I was reading the other day in the patch, I believe it was, about us being the only district in Somerset County to be seeing a state aid reduction of a little over 2% totaling, I think, somewhere in the realm of 500,000-plus. I guess I was just curious, why were we singled out of all the districts in Somerset County to see this reduction? And I guess what can be done about it, or how can we build a better relationship with our local leaders? Because I know that that was talked about at numerous meetings, that we had great relationship, and so I was quite surprised to read this in the patch, I believe it was. So if I could get an answer to that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, the S2, which is this law that was agreed to over the Fourth of July weekend over the summer, basically says that $600 million of funding will be transferred from a third of the districts in the state of New Jersey to the other two-thirds of districts. We're not alone in this situation, but we are the lone district in Somerset County to receive a reduction. The reason is because of the state aid funding formula. It's a combination of developing an adequacy budget, that is, that the cost of which is shared between, it's called the local fair share and state aid. According to the funding formula, as I indicated before, Hillsborough's local fair share is about 102 million, our taxation is about 97 million, the difference being about five, closer to five and a half million. Our adequacy budget increased because our enrollment increased and because the cost per pupil increased in the formula. It changes annually. And I think I mentioned that the type of advocacy that I would suggest, contacting legislators. Let them know your thoughts on this. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michelle Balasov. I'm from 446.
Excuse me, I can't hear anybody. Can you help, Kaz?
Can I go? Okay. My name's Michelle Balasov. I'm from 446 Long Hill Road. So obviously, we're disappointed by the outcome of the referendum, but I want to talk about, from what we heard as members of the community, why people voted no, and maybe if we change that, then there could be different outcomes. So there was an overwhelming opinion that people didn't know where the money in the budget was going. And I'm not saying that you guys didn't provide that information, but perhaps most people can't understand the way it was provided. So is there a way to make a source where people could go and really know and understand, because in layman's terms, right, we're not accountants, how the budget is going to be spent, where the money is going, so that people feel that there's more transparency? And not to say that there's any conspiracy, but when people don't know, then they're more likely to vote no for something. But if we know that this is not just about full-day kindergarten, but it affects every child in the community, teachers, staff, administration, and if people could understand that better, then they would be voting on knowledge versus, you know, opinions because they don't know the facts. So perhaps we could, like, come together and make a site or a website that better explains where the dollars are going so that people who, you know, are having trouble understanding the charts and Excel spreadsheets and the facts don't vote no because they don't understand the facts, but vote on what they really know.
Thank you. Do you want to add a comment?
I don't disagree with you that this was very complicated information, and the way that it was presented, we'll be spending a lot of time reflecting upon this issue. Unfortunately, our most urgent issue that we're dealing with now is how to deal with the consequences of a referendum failure and how to do that in a way that minimizes, to what extent we can, the impact on children.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that if you want the members of the community to vote in an educated way, we need to educate them in a way where they're going to understand it. And even sitting here, you know, I'm an intelligent woman, I've graduated college and medical school, but sometimes I don't understand your Excel spreadsheets. And I think a lot of people had issues that they didn't understand where the money was going. So in the future, so that we're not in the same position, maybe we could present the facts in a different way, in layman's terms, so that people understand where the money is going, so that we won't be in the same position and thinking, what are we going to do now that we don't have the money? Because there are going to be more votes in the future, and I'd like people to vote yes, but I can't make them vote yes because I know where the money's going.
Joe Trubalski, Principal of Hillsborough Middle School. But I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. We'd first like to commend the Board of Education for its continued dedication to a progressive, student-centered vision for Hillsborough schools. We want to remind everyone that it's built on a strategic plan that was developed in a very thorough, collaborative, transparent, and deliberative manner. In the 2015-16 school year, dozens of residents representing every facet of Hillsborough community came together and for several months met and reached consensus on a number of high-priority strategic goals that are vital to the future of the children and the families. families, the schools, and the very township of Hillsborough for this generation and those to follow. Improve learning environments at every level with enhanced resources, supports, and programs for the social, emotional, cultural, and physical well-being of our students. To expand developmentally appropriate programs for early childhood education. And to increase the college and career readiness opportunities at the secondary level, not only in academic areas, but in preparation for vocational and technical careers as well. The Board rightly committed itself to this broad-based, community-developed strategic plan. And in the two years that followed, teams of principals, supervisors, directors, teachers, many of whom are all assembled here tonight, thoroughly studied the recommendations in that plan. We reviewed the literature, the research, and current programs in schools across the country and frankly around the world. And we brought forward sound proposals to sustain and advance Hillsborough as a leading community of excellence for children and education. We commend the Board for the early actions that were taken last year to enact some of the elements in that strategic plan. And your commitment to put forward a reasonable proposal to this community that would provide the funding necessary to sustain the excellence of our existing programs while advancing our work towards meeting the important goals of the strategic plan for our kids. While the failure of this particular referendum presents real and unfortunate setbacks to Hillsborough schools, please know that the principals, the vice principals, supervisors, directors, teachers, and support professionals at all levels are dedicated to providing a world-class education for each and every single student in our care each and every day. And we implore you to exhaust every effort to preserve and support the outstanding professionals who are the lifeblood of the services our schools provide. There is not one teacher, not one administrator, nor any one support professional who is not directly connected to the success and well-being of students and the educational programs in this community. A loss of any one diminishes our collective work and impacts students and families. Finally, it is critical that we redouble our efforts to inform and impress upon the community why our current programs and the strategic plan are necessary if we are to remain a high-achieving school system in a world with increasingly competitive communities and advancing markets. This effort is vital to the future of Hillsborough and our children. We stand resolute in this mission. Do not abandon the strategic plan. Do not abandon our work. Do not abandon our principles, nor all of our dedication to these efforts on behalf of the thousands of students who are relying on us to meet our responsibilities and our obligations to them now and for the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Kelly Milano, 87 Meadowbrook Drive, teacher at Don Road School, mom of three children in the district, taxpayer. I stand before you a bit frustrated. I stand before you a bit frustrated. The voting down of the referendum has now placed us in a dark place. I had sent an email asking why the community was not notified of what the potential cuts may look like in Hillsborough schools, and I still don't know based on the presentation tonight. This referendum was more than just full-day kindergarten, although some would say that full-day kindergarten was a mask to divert attention away from the fact that the school district is in need of money to maintain what we currently have. At Dr. Schiff's coffee a few weeks ago, he had shared that courtesy busing programs pay-to-play in Chromebooks may cost families in Hillsborough more, yet this information has not been shared with the public at large. I was actually not even aware that we currently paid for Chromebooks. I thought that really we just paid for the insurance of the Chromebook. So I am unclear as to what we are currently paying, just as a side note. At every presentation over the past several months, one of the first reasons mentioned as to why we needed this money in the referendum has been that teachers' healthcare premium is on the rise. As a teacher, I've been made to feel defeated and devalued. Healthcare costs are rising across the country. I do not see other service-based organizations saying to their customers that they are raising prices because the insurance premium has gone up for their full-time employees. Unfortunately, what this has done is really to put a sour taste in the mouths of the community, asking teachers why they can't give more. I wish the community would ask, what has happened to all the money that teachers have paid for their healthcare? Since 2013, teachers have been contributing to healthcare on average $4 to $6 million a year. It's not going into our classrooms. Since July 2013, teachers and staff have been contributing to the cost of our health benefits, ranging anywhere between 18% and 34% of the premium, yet upper administration and the Board has not made these figures clear to the public. The idea of putting the burden of balancing the budget back on the teachers really does upset me. I voted yes, knowing that I'd pay more taxes, that I'll likely get less in my paycheck again, and probably have to purchase the supplies for my classroom out of my own pocket again. This year, I purchased portable stools so my students can gather at the front of the room for mini lessons, purchased a rug for them to sit on in groups, and a couch so that there is comfortable space to sit. I'm implementing what is considered best practices with my own money, like so many teachers here. We are told through our evaluation system that our classroom climate needs to be at a certain level. And administrators would like to see these things in our classrooms, yet we're not given the resources to do so. Personally, I work two other jobs so that I can continue to balance the needs of my family and the needs of my students. So I ask you, teachers in the audience, how many of you work more than one job? Thank you. I realize that tonight I'm a little bit all over the place, but I am defeated. I'm tired of continuously giving more, being the scapegoat for things that have fiscally gone wrong in our district, and I'm tired of the lack of transparency. Most of all, I'm tired of being made to feel undervalued. I realize and acknowledge that teacher salaries and benefits are the district's greatest budget item. However, we're also the district's greatest asset. We are the front line, the ones impacting change each and every day for our students and community as a whole. For once, I would like to feel valued and appreciated for the work I do each day, for the commitment I make to the success of my students, and for the role I play in supporting the well-being of our community. For once, I would like the teachers and staff of this community to be appreciated by the administration and the Board of Education. I would like you pleased to stop holding us accountable for decisions that you've made that have been and continue to be beyond our control. The decisions that have brought us to this dark place have been made by the people sitting at the table before us. Please stop making those of us on the other side of the table feel responsible for those choices. Thank you.
We have a long line of people waiting to speak. Can we please try to keep as close to the three minutes as possible?
Sure. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shangard Nandra, and I live in Davenport Hillsborough. I have one quick question and a possible suggestion. Like, I'm just curious to know what percentage of the total funding goes towards the employees' benefits and salaries? And if that percentage goes up, down, or stays steady over the years? That's my question. I don't know if you can answer this, or I can take it offline.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry. I had a hard time understanding.
The question is that what percentage of the total funding or the total revenue that the school system has goes towards the employees' benefits and salaries? And if that percentage goes up or reduces?
If you... Hold on a second. We can give you that number. So salaries and benefits are about 80%? That's the total?
That's the total. Okay. Seems like a pretty... And does it actually go up or down, or is staying steady over the years?
So that would fluctuate based on contractual obligations and also the increase in premiums?
Okay. The other thing I have is a suggestion. For the sake of fairness, for example, to those who are single or families who have no children, or the retirees, would the Board consider levying some kind of a fee for every student that attends the school system? It could be a couple of hundred dollars a year or something like that. That will then allow you to have that extra revenue to do things that you want to do. I don't know if that's something that's doable.
We're looking at every possible revenue opportunity right now. But it's very difficult to balance a budget on fees that you've never collected before because you have to anticipate a certain number, and you have no track record in terms of how many people are going to pay and how much money it's going to generate. So if you're talking about something like activity fees, if we charged $100 to every kid in the middle school and the high school, that would generate, just based on our population, $360,000. $360,000, okay? Nice sum of money. Except Bridgewater did this four years ago. Bridgewater's the largest school district than us, and they have only... In their first year, they collected $174,000 according to their budget. And the next year, it went up into the 200s, and it sort of stayed stable at that point. So any new fee structure would take some time to settle into, you know, a reliable revenue. In the meantime, you can't budget for expenses against a revenue that you might not get. So yes, we are looking at all of those possibilities, but I just want everybody to understand, this is not a seven-figure item under any set of circumstances. We could do a couple of hundred thousand, which will save certain positions, which is a value of ours going forward. But I appreciate your recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Glener at Goodhue. I live at 16 Laurel Drive. I'm a taxpayer, a homeowner, and a proud parent of a Sunny Mead student. I am deeply disturbed, like many, by the outcome of this referendum. I'm baffled at how you could let the financial situation of our school district become so tenuous that the results of one special election determine the unjust fate of 50 beloved educators in our community. Is it because you prioritize technology over people? Do you still feel that Google was worth it, knowing the devastating impact this failed referendum will have on our district? Can you guarantee that the educational experiences of our children will not be negatively impacted by these skewed priorities? Can you reassure us that the aftershock of this failed referendum will not drive our property values down as you cut away at the educational system that is the heart of our community? Now that the worst-case scenario has unfortunately become all of our realities, what will you do to mitigate the damages? The efforts of a board member to ensure that this referendum failed by the social media postings and unsolicited emails is reprehensible. How dare you do that to our children? The flippant and callous response to the results of the vote via an e-blast were completely and utterly disappointing because you knew what impact this would have on our children, educators, and community. You need to fix this because sitting by and watching our children suffer the consequences of your mishandling of our tax dollars is not an option. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing your solutions.
Amy Salinger, Hillsborough Education Association Treasurer. This idea has been said from this podium before. A budget is a reflection of values and priorities. Even in financially difficult times, a budget can still reflect values and priorities. I'm glad to see the acknowledgement of the healthcare contributions of employees who have been contributing to aiding the budget since 2011. In previous years, the amount had been provided, but I did notice it was not provided this year, and we have... Most of us are contributing 21% of the premium. The budget presented tonight seems to reflect one that focuses more on the easy fixes when faced with financial hardship. It is one that cuts personnel and increases fees, where other options explored, like the one-to-one program, or at the very least, not paying to have our logo printed or etched on all devices. I found it very ironic. We listened to a highlight of Hillsborough school rankings, followed by a budget presentation with cuts that would hurt those rankings. Last week, we knew the defeat of the referendum would have a ripple effect on our schools. Tonight, we found out just how bad that was. I also have no doubts about the negative effects the state funding has on our district. I've stood at this podium before and asked the Board to consider options for fighting against unfair school funding. It was around 2010 or 2011, and at the time, I highlighted some cases of local school boards doing whatever they could to help their districts. It is now almost 10 years later, and Hillsborough continues to lose state aid. So here I am, again, to ask you to consider all options available, considering the situation we are in. Currently in New Jersey, there are eight school districts suing the New Jersey Department of Education over state aid cuts. Those districts include Brick, Jackson, Manalapan English Town, Tombs River Regional, Lacey, Freehold Regional, Waymouth, and Ocean Township. Has Hillsborough considered joining in this suit or considering a similar option? It is my understanding that when the 2% cap was instituted, it allowed for a school board to pass a budget without an election by registered voters. It is also my understanding that if a school board presented a budget above the 2% cap, that budget could be voted on in an election. Has the Board considered this option, one that perhaps wasn't as big of an ask as the referendum, but could give the town the choice to keep staff and possibly eliminate other cuts or increase fees in the budget presented tonight? The failure of the referendum has placed us at a crossroads. What is this Board willing to do to ensure we choose the right path moving forward? It is clear from the budget presentation, the 50 positions are not final or specified. The decisions made here will impact this district and community. I urge you to consider all available options. Hillsborough, and especially its students, deserve better.
Amy? Amy? You don't have to come back up if you don't want to, but I need to assure you, we are looking into every single option. The fact that the other organizations are joining in on this lawsuit does not necessarily mean that we would not get the benefits of whatever the results of that lawsuit is. And we have certainly... And I have to say this about our superintendent. He has been all over this. He has testified many times. He has met with anyone and everyone. Our state legislators have been awesome. They have been all over the leadership down in Trenton to try to specifically help Hillsborough. But as I'm sure you understand, you know, the state legislature has more than our district to contend with. And the unfortunate thing is, they have taken money away from us and, at the same time, made two-thirds of the district's very happy. So yes, we are looking for fixes. We will continue on a practically daily basis to continue to look for fixes. And we will do that as vigorously as we possibly can.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was going off of the information I had currently, based on what was presented, but I do appreciate those efforts. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, thank you for your good ideas. We've talked before. I'm sure we'll talk again. Thank you.
Kitty Ward, Secretary, Hillsborough Education Association.
And, you know, thank you for your good ideas. We've talked before, I'm sure we'll talk again. Thank you.
Kitty Ward, Secretary, Hillsborough Education Association. Madam President and Board of Ed members, would you agree that holding a position that allows you to make decisions that impact the lives of many holds with it a great deal of responsibility?
Yes.
Would you agree that such positions need to be governed by a code of ethics?
Yes.
In fact, as we all know, it is covered by 18A:12-24.1. Specifically, Item E, which read, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education," and will, I'm sorry, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board." Or, Item F, that says, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." Would or should prevent a Board of Ed member from publicly posting and undermining a referendum that was voted on by a majority vote of the Board that they serve? Perhaps to seek reelection? We don't know. We don't know what a person's motivation is. Legal, yes. Ethical, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Madam President, did you want me to give my committee report first or second?
Oh, sorry. Go right ahead.
Hold on, just have to log in. Mr. Mahmood, please don't stop the timer.
You're supposed to tell me when you have a committee report.
Well, I didn't want to scream from the audience. I didn't think it appropriate.
That's all right.
Woods Road School teachers supported our home-in-school fundraising efforts by donating teacher time raffles for Pictonite. Also, over 16 members showed up to emcee Picto, hand out prizes, and have fun with our students. Thank you to Sue Dusenzo for submitting your report. The fourth-grade teachers of Hillsborough Elementary School, along with Emily Marabella, worked with the fourth-grade students to put on the play The Wizard of Oz. Liz Shriver and Jessica Lee volunteered to chaperone the cast during performances. The staff volunteered many hours of their time to produce the show. Thank you to Val Muldoon for your submission. At Hillsborough Elementary, this past month, the third-grade students hosted their third-grade dance program. Mrs. Sell, Mr. Jenkins, and Mrs. Rutt, sorry if I mispronounced, worked with the students to perform many fun dances. They volunteered their time to have a performance in the evenings, so that the families of our students could attend at Autun Road School. Thank you to Valerie Sell for submitting this report. On March 5th, eight current staff members of Triangle School and one retiree visited Foothill Acres to entertain seniors with music, dance, games, trivia, and prizes for St. Patty's Day. The program was well-received by the residents. Thank you to Deb Mamawala for submitting this report. At Sunnymead Elementary, National Day of Writing. Months prior to putting a set design all together, props and backdrops are created for a one-of-a-kind experience for the students on the Sunnymead stage. The students step into a whole new world of wonder in order to spark creative writing ideas. A common reaction from the students when they enter the transformed stage is, wow, it feels like I'm in Disney World. A special thanks to Ari, and I just don't know, I can't say the last name, DeLucas. Thank you for submitting this report. And another report from Sunnymead Elementary. Reader's Theater. The special area teachers plan for months to create unique theaters, each one different with props, a unifying theme and special stories. Students travel from theater to theater to learn and be entertained by the teachers and characters. Reader's Theater leaves such a lasting impression. Students can recall years of different characters and sets that have been used. Thanks again, Ari. From Sunnymead. Students and staff brought in ingredients needed to put together soup kits for local food banks. They also collected canned goods to donate as well. Thank you, Michelle Sarek, for submitting this report. Alina Misari, 466 Raider Boulevard, Second Vice President, Hillsborough Education Association. At the January 7th meeting, the BOE agenda included Item 15.1. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset, New Jersey, providing for the submission of a proposal for a tax levy to fund school district expenses and full day K to the school district voters at a special school district election to be held on Tuesday, March 12, 2019. Prior to the vote, a statement by a board member was made that included the following. "I'm not against full day K. I just think there are higher priorities, such as meeting payroll for our current staff. And I am not willing to gamble the jobs of our current staff by asking this referendum as one question." Her statement continued with six more points regarding her objections to instituting full day K at this time. In closing out her statement, she stated, "My priorities are to continue to improve educational quality and show our teachers and staff that we appreciate them. Also, just like in our personal homes, we need to allocate money for infrastructure maintenance. Those are my top three priorities." Upon completion of her statement and a spirited discussion, a motion was made. BOE members voted in regards to posting the question. The votes were seven, ayes, one nay, and one absent board member. The motion passed. Over the course of the next two months, social media platforms moderated by the Hillsborough Township Public Schools and the Hillsborough Education Association were used to highlight this referendum. A total of 30 Facebook posts and 10 tweets were sent out, and by default, shared throughout the town. In addition, 13 presentations from August 2018 through February 2019 were available for view on the district website. There were informational flyers. There were texting and phone campaigns. There were multiple coffee with the superintendent meetings. The superintendent visited all work sites to share the presentation. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education fully supported this referendum. And then on March 8th, 9th, and 10th, three separate Facebook posts, which garnered multiple comments and multiple shares appeared, some of which included inaccurate information, which then had to be clarified on March 11th. It's especially hard to digest that these posts came from a Board of Ed member, the lone dissenting vote, three days prior to the referendum. How did those posts support the priorities that were listed at the January 7th meeting? The Board of Education voted yes. Regardless of the votes, majority ruled. As a member of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, it is your responsibility to uphold the decisions put forward by the Board on which you serve. The referendum was defeated. Jobs will be lost. Educational programming will be cut. I'm not sure how that ties in with the priorities that were outlined either. While social media can certainly bring about positive change, it can equally be the root of negative consequence. I know I speak on behalf of the Hillsborough Education Association when I say that all the information we put out there was accurate, was in support of keeping our building safe, our staff intact, and most importantly, that our kids continue to receive the highest quality of education they deserve. Can you say the same? We remain united. We remain engaged.
And if I may say, we thank you for your support of the referendum.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Laurel Drive, Wells Hillsborough Education Association. As president of the HEA and a Hillsborough parent, I've struggled with the failure of the referendum on multiple levels. The idea that 50 of the exceptional professionals who dedicated themselves to our schools and students now stand to be terminated is not only heartbreaking, it is an act of educational negligence. Since last Tuesday, I have devoted my time to address the concerns of my members, my friends, and my neighbors, all of whom fear for the future of this district and their families, all of whom who also recognize that the failure of Tuesday's vote was not truly about the merit of the question, but was a resounding rejection of the actions that led to the question even being needed in the first place. This outcome is a result of failed vision. A vision of vanity and not stability. One that gave bonuses and saw fit to spend millions of dollars on Chromebooks and technology while ignoring the most basic needs of the district and not accounting for the future. How many jobs could have been saved with these funds? How many students will now be crammed into overcrowded classrooms that will have projectors with bulbs we can no longer afford and PA systems that sporadically function? Following Tuesday's failure, we heard nothing from the district, nothing, for three days. Then, late Friday afternoon, we received an email that acknowledged the community's decision, but also included the distasteful request that staff announce plans to leave or retire by an arbitrary date in an overt attempt to make administration's decisions easier while making our members that much more difficult. Where was the respect owed to the professionals who arrived at work on Wednesday morning, put aside uncertainty and concerns for their own families, and delivered the excellent education that this failure now threatens? It's this callous lack of compassion for our members that I think upsets me the most. This speaks to a profound indifference for the employees of this district and is indicative of so much more than a simple message or a single vote. And it might just explain the approach that was taken to some of the suggestions that were made in reference to this referendum. This profound indifference, though, was on full display when a member of the Board directly undermined the efforts to provide financial stability to our schools. This member took it upon themselves to send unsolicited emails to many, to residents, many of whom are my members, many of whom spend well over $300 a year for their classrooms and students, and many of whom who now stand to lose their jobs due to the skewed information presented and widely circulated. No matter how one votes, I fully support the dissemination of information to ensure that voters are informed. However, I must take issue when a board member breaks rank and openly subverts the referendum while simultaneously mentioning that she is running for reelection in an election that is eight months away. Even more reprehensible is the fact that these actions are done with the full knowledge that it could damage our schools and result in the loss of 50 jobs. I hope that this member feels that this price is worth paying for reelection and knows that she is accountable to what was done to these employees, their families, and Hillsborough's students. I also hope the remainder of the Board is reevaluating their actions moving forward. The current situation we are facing is difficult enough, but we are also engaged in negotiations, a process rooted in trust. A trust that is seriously shaken, if not irreparably broken, due to the actions taken by a member of your Board. To fix this, we don't need your words. We need your actions. Make decisions and cuts that mitigate the loss and impact to education. Look to the excess that we have repeatedly pointed to from this podium before you look to balance this failure on the backs of our members. We want to see that you are as deeply disturbed by the vision, actions, and inactions that led us to this point, that you feel compelled to protect our students and members. We want to see that you have learned from this failure and will take steps to ensure that there is accountability, so it never happens again. Most of all, we want to see that your connection to these schools and the community extends beyond your role on the Board. We are the heart of this community, and our actions continue to define us as such.
Wow, that's pretty hard to follow up. Pusquale, 161 Bywater Way, Hillsborough. I have a question on Subject 12.7, Motion to Improve Travel Reimbursement Expenses on this document here. It says a maximum expenditure of $105,000 for all staff and Board members for the 2019-2020. What was the expenditure last year? Can somebody let me know what the travel expenditures were last year? I'm checking to see if there's a cut here, maybe, I don't know.
Okay. We'll have to look that up if you'd like to leave your name and phone number.
That's fine, I can do that.
And let me just say this to the crowd. One of the reasons we discourage questions at Board meetings is because items like that are not immediately known to people.
Okay, that's fine. No, I was just wondering because...
So if you have questions about how much money we spend on X, Y, and Z, Board Office is open, 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock. Somebody there is happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Valleo, 49, Wesley Road in Hillsborough. I have three children, one of which is at Hillsborough Elementary School. And first, I just want to thank all the teachers for showing up tonight. I know it's not necessarily an easy thing to do, given everything that's going on, and your presence is not, presence is appreciated, and it shows just how much of a wonderful community we live in, that we have this many staff that will show up in the evening. My question is, is we've talked about, a lot about the referendum, but what is the Board's plan moving forward to engage the community so that if and when there's another ask, that we don't run into the same issues that we've been having? Social media can be our friend, but it can also be something that is a big black area. There's a lot of misinformation going on. So I think the Board, I implore the Board to come up with a strategic plan and come up with a really good outreach. As a community member, I would be happy to participate. I'm a member of the HSA. I'm willing to help. But I think we really need to crack this nut, and we need to figure out exactly how we get parents and, we had 24% of the town show up to vote. That's not acceptable in this, in this, in this day and age. It's just not. I'm sorry. So we need to figure this out, and I implore the Board to do just that. Thank you.
If I may just respond to one part of your comment. I fully agree with you in terms of voter turnout and other things that you've said. Historically, presidential elections get about 70% to 80%. Gubernatorial elections get about 50%. And off-year elections could get as low as 25%. We've had some incredibly low turnouts here. I am a very big fan of voting. I think everybody needs to come out and vote every time. And you would be surprised how people justify the fact that they don't vote, and then they object to the outcome. And one of my favorite expressions is, votes matter. My other favorite expression is, facts matter. And to some degree, voters have an obligation to inform themselves about things that they're voting on. We put presentations from August 27th on our website. Every single presentation covered a different set of facts, including many of the ones that we've been accused of not putting out to the public. And I've heard back, well, they've been too long, or, you know, I haven't had time to do it. Well, if it matters to you, you need to find the time. Likewise, everybody in the Board office would have been happy to walk somebody through their questions, okay? As would Board members, quite honestly. I have three new Board members. Every single one of them called me over the weekend to talk about the budget, because they have not gone through a budget before. Likewise, anybody wants to call me and ask questions about the budget, feel free to do so, okay? We're residents, we're neighbors of yours. We want everybody to understand as much as they can. But beyond, I mean, we put out text messages, we put out, not text messages, emails to the community. Dr. Schiff met with both senior citizen groups in town. He met with every HSA. Various Board members went along with him to all of these, you know, presentations. He went to the Township Committee and presented the budget to them. He put out the fact that anybody who wanted to have a presentation, let them know. And, you know, the newspapers have been as helpful as they can be. We have a weekly newspaper in town. You know, they did what they could. Courier-News covers when they cover. Stuff goes on Facebook, and everybody can substitute their set of facts for anyone else's. And it's very troubling, and it was very hurtful to all of the people on this Board and in this administration, and among all these staff members who worked really hard to get the referendum out there for people to consider. We asked the people, do you want to move forward like this? Do you want to make your community, schools, stronger? Do you want to have full-day kindergarten? Do you want to have full-day kindergarten?" One of the misunderstandings about full-day kindergarten is it was a strategic opportunity to get more money from the state. While we were reduced in one category of state aid, the enrollment aid that that would have produced by going from half-time to full-time would have generated more state money. Had we just asked for funds without full-day kindergarten, that number would have been more. Do you want to argue with me about how much, and I don't mean you, but do people want to argue with me whether it's $5 more or $5 less? Not productive.
And I under...
So, I really appreciate your comments.
I understand your points. I was a resounding yes vote. However, I think...
So was I.
There was a lot of, I think as a board, I'm a very strategic person, we need to revisit our strategy moving forward and figure out, "We did all these things the last time, that's done, we can't change that now. But what are we going to do to pick ourselves up from our boots and move forward because we don't want to go backwards?"
Okay, well, here's the deal with full-day kindergarten. The reason we had to have this election in March was in order to get full-day kindergarten operational by September would be, would give us the ability to get state aid numbers changed as of October 15th. At this point, the next opportunity for a referendum, which I'm not sure I'm ready for, and you also need two months to give the clerk to get a question on the ballot, but that's another story. If we had a referendum in September and it passed overwhelmingly, we still would not be able to get state aid into our coffers for two years. Therefore, the township would have to be willing to subsidize that for two years, you know, to basically invest, lay out the money for future additional income. And it's now become more difficult to make that case, and it's devastating to me, honestly.
I understand.
And for all the comments that were made, believe me when I tell you, the board worked really, really hard on all of this preparation, and we feel as devastated as you do, for the most part. So...
Thank you.
It's hard to figure out where to go from here, and, you know, the possibility of moving forward with a new high school without an overwhelming commitment from the community. I mean, designing a high school requires a lot of professional help. Professional help is expensive. We don't have the money for that professional work at this point, correct?
Correct.
So, there are a lot of dominos here, and it's just unfortunate that, you know, we're going to have to deal with that. And, you know, it's sort of hard to absorb all of this and find a path forward, but we will, because we have good people, and everybody's coming forward with ideas, and we have good people in our community. And I hope you will come forward and work with us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Tom Isabella, night up in Ashanet Court. Just want to preface this by saying, my heart is beating out of my chest because I know what it is that I'm about to say is going to be very unpopular in this room, but I'm never one to stray away from dissent or disagreement at board meetings or public meetings. I wasn't going to say this, but I am going to publicly say that I am one of the many who voted no. I am not here to gloat. I'm here to explain a little bit as to why I voted no. As many of you know, I came to almost all the board meetings leading up to this vote this past year and last year. And the reason, and I am a graduate of the high school, and I had great educators and teachers, and I don't discount the hard work that many of these teachers put in and the quality of education I received before I graduated in 2012. But I voted no because I looked at my own neighborhood, you know, as a microcosm to the rest of the community, and I saw the struggle of many homeowners in my own little neighborhood, many of which, you know, were elderly folks who informed me that they did talk, you know, they understood about the tax freeze, but many of them just made just over to qualify for the tax freeze, and it was just too much for them. And many other homeowners who had children in the district, who thought that their child or children received a great education, just could no longer afford it and felt that they were being forced out if they were to vote yes, and they could not financially afford it. So yes, I might have voted for my own self-interest or for the self-interests of the neighbors whom I spoke with, but I just want to assure everybody in this room, it was not an easy decision for me, and truly, I don't discount at all, at all, what you guys do in this room. I really don't. And I know we can disagree, but I think it would be best if we don't lob, you know, curveballs at one another and accuse people of these awful things. Whether there was misinformation on Facebook, I'm sorry if that was the case, but, you know, we all have a right to freedom of speech, and we should never forget that in our society. But again, I just wanted, again, I just don't want anyone to think because I voted no or other people voted no that we discount what you do. There's, you know, people on this board who, you know, I will single out Ms. Stats. She was my former geometry teacher. I loved her, okay? She was unique, you know, in the way she presented herself, but that's what made her her. And I had so many teachers like that, and I just, again, just because I voted no does not mean that I discount all the wonderful work that you guys do. And this is really hard to stand up here and say what I said, but again, thank you for all that you do, and thank you sincerely.
Jeff Constantino, Fox Chase, Ron. I've heard a lot of people saying how much you give, and you feel like you're slighted because people just don't understand. We understand you work hard. You have to understand. The rest of the community out there works just as hard, okay? And over the years, yeah, you're paying 21%, you say, 20%? Average in New Jersey is 30%. Many employers cut their insurance plans down from platinum to bronze. Basically, what that means, you get $12,000 out of your pocket before anything kicks in, all right? You want to know where the budget is going, why they're laying people off? $5 million a year in added raises, which I think you deserve, but the benefits are going up 12% a year. That's another almost $3 million extra a year. That's where it's going. And what they're doing is business 101. Any company is going to say, "Well, somebody want to retire so we don't have to let somebody go." They're not picking on you. If somebody is ready to retire and somebody doesn't have to be laid off, is that a bad thing? Somebody up here made it a bad thing. It's not. It cuts down the numbers. You guys all pay almost $1,000 a year in dues. How come the NJEA isn't working with them to find a way that you guys can all work together, instead of just saying, "$5 million a year, pass it on to the taxpayers"? Guess what? I don't get a raise automatically just to pay because I have to pay more health insurance. My wife doesn't, my neighbors don't, okay? We're losing too. That's called inflation, and that's why you're getting your raises. Not just because you have more money to spend, because of inflation. Yes, happy employees. But you can't be happy, where's the money coming from? I'll tell you what, I'll give you 300 bucks out of my, every year, every one of you drop your salary, 300. I'm talking, you're not supposed to, you're rude.
It's not, excuse me, just to make sure...
Okay, I just wanted to say, you got a tough thing to go.
Just want to make sure that we're clear that as you are addressing the board, you're addressing the board, the interaction is not to be between members of the community and you. That's fine, but just to remind you that you'll address the board, the board president, and then if there's a response, it's necessary.
Okay, to the board, you're between a rock and a hard place. I kind of feel sorry for you, and I know somebody's going to have to lose here. The referendum pretty much pushed that the taxpayers are done paying for a while. We're getting our finances in line also. I mean, it's tough. I hope you guys can work it out, I hope there's some negotiations. Other ideas to save money I already sent to you, okay? One of them is, you have 300 students a semester that get a parking permit. Why are we paying busing for them? That's over $100,000 a year, okay? And guaranteed, they're all seniors, they're never taking the bus, okay? I have two kids, they got the parking permit, they never said, and I said, "Why don't you, why can't I just give them money back?" Okay? Good luck.
Sue DeSendo, 131 South Triangle Road, also a teacher in the district and a parent of two students. Lifelong resident, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I wrote to the board, I need to say this. My parents are, we're farmers, they're both gone now. Seven children in the district, and they would never, ever have voted no for education, I am so disheartened. When seven of us went through the school system, my parents said, "Somebody else was paying when my kids were in the district, and so we pay for the education." We have made a grave mistake, Hillsborough, and we are going to suffer, Hillsborough. And I am disheartened because I love this town, I was born and raised here, and I voted yes, and I'm not sure how I was going to pay the taxes, but I was going to find a way to do it because I believe in Hillsborough and our educators. That's it.
I wasn't going to talk, I was debating. Here I am. I'm a little bit all over the place, bear with me. My name is Leisha Gabor-Bayless, you've seen me on Facebook. Yay. Okay, so I'm just going to start out with what I had started before, okay? So, had the referendum passed, I would have considered standing here to remind everyone of how we could do even more, become the best center of excellence that we could be. I would stand here and talk about how we could hire bilingual teachers and start an immersion program similar to the one Princeton has started in one of their schools. Our students, little sponges, could become bilingual ambassadors to the world. Our mission statement, don't forget. The Hillsborough Township Public School District is committed to providing a superior education for all students so they will lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. I hope that the teachers realize that we are behind them. I hope the administration is able to work some magic and work to give every child the education he or she deserves, whether this child is a special-needs child, a child who is behind the grade level, a child who is at the grade level, and those who are above the grade levels. One possible idea, which may be difficult, given that you are facing such cuts, would be to possibly implement full-day kindergarten in Woodfern. It sounds as though there is space to do that. I know that you might have to move things around, but that would be one way to decrease the state aid a little bit and also get full-day kindergarten for some. Wouldn't it be equal for everybody? It would be something, just FYI. I would also suggest, like as you have in the past, to list in your agenda at least the topics, if not the names also, of what people share on your budget things so that we can share information with everybody. I would ask you that you could pile a simple email and post it to the district website, the names, the email addresses, and the phone numbers of all the legislative people that you'd possibly want anyone to possibly contact. You could also mention bullet points of what they could say, and also mention the Assembly bills and the Senate bills for full-day kindergarten for anyone who would like to keep pursuing full-day kindergarten. You need to make it easy for people, you need to make it simple for people. They don't have the time to look this up themselves, and they won't. I wrote to the superintendent and the business administration on Friday and look forward to a meeting where we can gather to debrief, go over what went well with the referendum and what did not go well. In the future, I would be interested in being on a focus group to review materials presented. Why me? I might have been the only person in this whole town who was able to decode the numbers that were presented. I asked for months, and I worked hard to understand them. The people of Hillsborough are busy, they need a simple analysis, let us work with you. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Going once, going twice? Okay, we move to board comment. Anybody have something to say? Yes, Joyce?
Can you hear me?
Let's give people an opportunity to leave, I guess.
Since last Tuesday, I have been quite disappointed at what has happened, and I know the board is very saddened because we've worked very hard to make a difference. Today, I wrote a statement, and it's coming from my heart. The financing of our schools comes from state, federal, and local funding, as we all know. While the state's portion increases as district enrollment grows, and as we have noted for the upcoming school year, the local allocation comes from our property taxes that doesn't increase reflective of our growing cost. We've had several new communities crop up in Hillsborough, and all of those communities, most of them, I believe all of them, have children that come to our schools. Additionally, an affordable housing community is going to be built soon, and once again, as a public school district, we will continue our efforts to endure the children, to educate the children to their highest potential, like every other student attending the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. The students are our number-one priority, and our many highly qualified and innovative teachers are an absolute necessity. I know that no one wants to see a tax increase, however, I know that there is no one in this audience who wouldn't want the best for their children and all of the other students. Those of us who don't have children in the schools, we know that great schools are most important for our property values. As the school district goes, so does the town. I said that at our last meeting. I realize that for some, the thought could have been, "So, do I tax myself?" It's not just about school taxes, it's about all taxes. Sadly, a vote which, if gone negatively as in the past election, could have catastrophic results for us all, and most especially the students and staff going forward. The Hillsborough Township Public Schools has been known for its commendable student achievement in the classrooms and competitive prowess in other after-school activities as well. Our district has been rated as one of the top school districts in New Jersey, and we will continue to strive to maintain and/or exceed that commendation. This vote has placed us in a position that will have an impact on all of us. As a board, we volunteer our time, our energy, and knowledge because we care. We are all saddened about the outcome of this referendum. I would like to end with this quote by Matt Blunt, "Public education is an investment in our future." And this quote by Tom Brokaw, "There is a place in America to take a stand, it is public education. It is the underpinning of our cultural and political system. It is the great common ground. Public education, after all, is the engine that moves us as a society toward a common destiny. It is in public education that the American dream begins to take shape." Thank you.
And she's only been doing this for two and a half months. Thank you, Joyce, that was a slam dunk. Anybody else? Jane?
I will probably also be all over about some comments I wanna make, but I really wanna, I appreciate all the suggestions that people have been making at the mic and also online. And anybody can make them, and if you feel more comfortable, you can be anonymous, especially when you post them online, of course. When I was invited to, I'm not gonna say what school, but I was invited to Reed as part of Reed Across America, I read to a second grade class that had 26 students. And I'm thinking, "We should be reducing class sizes," but we're not, we're gonna end up increasing them, the second grade class. Also, as far as cutbacks are concerned, I want us to keep our eye on the prize. Our focus is the students, and anyone, and anything that directly affects students, especially anyone. Staff members, teachers, instructional aides. Really gotta keep our eye on that. Having said that, no matter who we get rid of, this is gonna be harsh. That sounds harsh, but that's the problem. Whether you're a teacher, administrator, an instructional aide, a secretary, that's a human being who has a family, who is losing their job. And I don't want us to lose sight of that. Sometimes I work, I think of analogies to the extreme, and what comes to mind is this quote by Stalin. "A single death is a tragedy, a million deaths is a statistic." So, you know, we're talking about 50 positions, sometimes we get lost in how many that is. But every single one of them is a tragedy. Not only for that person, but of course the effect they have on the students. Even the ones that maybe don't have a direct effect on the students, it will have a negative effect on education. Even if it's just extracurricular or sports, that has an effect on students. If it keeps a kid from playing, that then, if you think it is education that's important, if it keeps them from playing sports or being involved in activity, then that does impact their education, from having a nice attitude, a passion for something affects their learning. And also, I know some teachers, at least when I was still teaching, it might still be a fact, teachers' take-home pay have gone down because of their contributions to their healthcare costs. And also, I was concerned before the referendum about how we handled things, did we do this right, did we do that right, should this have been done? But once the referendum took place, it was such a resounding no. I don't think, whatever parsing we do as far as what caused it, people did not want their taxes to go up, and I respect that, I respect that Tom was honest about that. And it is, some people were really in a it was a real dilemma for them, they really value education, but it is a hardship for them. But I'm concerned, I don't I'm concerned about scapegoating anyone in particular, or any group of people, and especially scapegoating any board member because I don't think anyone would've made a difference as far as getting the referendum passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Chris?
Over the last couple of weeks, you know, we've heard a lot of input on both sides of this issue, whether it was about taxes, or student, teacher cuts, or other staff cuts, you know, where is the money coming from, where is it going? I think there's a lot out there, and I think part of this falls on us, but there's a lot out there, as somebody pointed out at the public mic, that people don't necessarily understand what we're doing, and I think there are some assumptions that get made about what we're doing and how we do it that probably aren't accurate, and that falls on us to some extent to address that. But I do think there's a couple of points I wanna make, there's been a number of suggestions that have come in, and actually sort of on both sides of the issue, that suggest we should just do X, Y, or Z. Public needs to understand that we are not a private company. We have a different set of rules and a different set of laws that we have to hold to, that a private company does not. That may be good, that may be bad, I don't know, but those are the facts of what we as a Board of Education deal with. So the one thing that frustrated me the most, as I saw discussions here and in various places online, is that in my estimation, this is purely my opinion, people making a lot of comments and a lot of accusations without actually looking to see whether what they were saying was even legal. And maybe that's on us, again, but I think it's also on the burden of anybody out there who feels qualified to make a comment and an accusation against this board, whether it's board, sorry, board members, the administration, or anybody else. And look, I'll take it, you wanna take shots at me, go right ahead. All I ask is that you at least check the facts and check the law before you tell me what I did was wrong, or how I should be doing something. If we went down 99% to 1% because the people of this township were fully educated on this issue, and understood the laws and the rules and how the system works that we as a board and administration have to work within, then so be it. But I will tell you right now, that is absolutely not what happened with this referendum. So I would beg the public, and I would beg this board and this administration, on both sides, do a better job educating yourself about the system and the rules and the laws before you vote, and before you cast dispersions on either side of the issue. Thank you.
Yep. So so the referendum was a no-win situation for this town. And the failure was bad for this district, but I still believe that passing the referendum would've been worse for the district in the long run. And to prove that point, I would go back to the charts that were done earlier, when we talked about revenue decreased. The fund balance, so the three items that were mentioned were healthcare waiver, fund balance, and state aid reduction. And the state aid reduction in this particular case was about $500,000. And so I say that even if the state allowed Hillsborough to take the waiver, which I'm advocating for, and I will be also testifying next week, if Hillsborough were allowed to take that $500,000 waiver, it still would not balance the $5 million hole. Okay? So, because of that, and because of the assumptions that went into this referendum that I still claim were poorly planned, and took some assumptions that could not be a guarantee, and because the fund balance problem that we're in was a result of previous assumptions that did not come true, that is why I was against this referendum. I am absolutely working with the administration to get a budget that does not lose jobs in the district. To me, it's, I don't accept the narrative that the board needs to cut 50 jobs, we haven't even talked about our priorities. I know Mrs. Haas has shown the listing, but that is just categories. We need to go back, as I think Mrs. Stotts had said, is what is our why? Our why is the student. So, we need to prioritize what we think is important for our student learning. And the one thing that I would point to is the NJCUSAC. When we see that the state prioritizes ELA, math, science, ELA is 19 points, 19 out of 100 points, math at 19 out of 100 points, science at 9 out of 100 points, and then social studies, world language, health and physical education, and visual and performing arts, these are all academic subject areas. Those should be our priority. I hear what the community is saying, I just really do believe that we need to have a conversation about our priorities, and not to just say "We're going to raise a tax levy by 8.1 million dollars, and so therefore we can stay at the status quo." If we don't have that conversation, and if the referendum had passed and we did not have that conversation, we would be in the same situation in a few years. I know it's not a popular thing to say, but I really do believe that the root causes are not as obvious as are stated by the majority of the board.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to our action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel and related expenses, overnight trips is listed, to approve the submission of application to the National Society of High School Scholars for the Educational Conference Registration Grant, also to approve field trips, affiliation agreement with Stockton University, the Nursing Services Plan, a new novel, policies for first reading, including practice and preseason, heat acclimation for school-sponsored athletics, extracurricular activities and service animals, also approve policies and regulations for second reading as listed, and approve out-of-district placements. There's two, I'm sorry, approve the change in out-of-district placements, and approve a new out-of-district placement.
Okay, may I have a motion for items 10.1 through 10.11?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments about the education agenda? Yes.
I'd like to separate out 10.9 policy, 5756, from the rest of the items, please, to vote separately.
Okay. So, we have a motion for all items except for the one separated by Mr. Gillette.
Yep.
Can I have a roll call on those, please?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Soson?
Yes.
Mrs. Statts?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And may I have a motion in second for that individual policy, 5756?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have some comments?
Well, yes, I'll just reiterate what I said last time, but I'll make it much, much shorter. I think the policy is anti-parent. I think gender dysphoria is a serious matter. I don't think we should be, the school district should be participating in any treatment for it without involvement of parents. And I think affirmation of gender identity is a treatment for gender dysphoria. It may not be, it may be a good treatment in some cases, it may not be for other children. A policy that says that parents may not be informed of an accommodation that we might make for a child with gender dysphoria, I think is absurd. There's no age limits in this policy, this could be for a kindergarten student up through a 12th grader. Maybe if the policy had some limits and said, "For high school students, that's their own business, we don't tell parents," maybe I could think about supporting it, but an all-age policy like this doesn't work. There's also some unscientific definitions within the policy, talking about assignment of gender at birth, you're not assigned a gender at birth. Your gender is a fact of your biological sex at birth, there's no assignment given. So, I'll be voting no, thank you.
Okay. After the first reading, when you made certain comments, there have been some adjustments to the policy?
Yeah.
And Vic, would you like to address any of that?
Sure, briefly. So, the policy itself would be consistent with the guidelines that are promulgated by the Department of Education. Just to clarify, and I don't think there's necessarily a misunderstanding, but just so the public is aware, there is a possibility that, under certain circumstances, you could have a student who may fear that something negative could happen at home if information is revealed to parents or something like that. Every decision about whether or not to discuss a transgender student's status with a parent is gonna be done on a case-by-case basis. And so, there are a lot of factors that come into play there. That would include the age of the student, it would include any potential issues that may exist at home, so forth and so on. It's not something that's gonna be a bright line rule, it's not gonna be something where if a student says, you know, "This is my gender identity, and I don't want you to tell my parents," that we just basically say, "Okay, well, that's it, the student has made a decision." Those decisions are ultimately gonna be made by adults, and in consultation, obviously, with the student. And again, everything is on a case-by-case basis. There may be some cases in which it's appropriate, there may be some cases in which it is not. So that's contemplated by the policy. And, you know, the remainder of the policy is something that's just, I don't wanna say dictated by, there are guidelines that are promulgated by the Department of Education, and the important thing that we have to remember in terms of our responsibility is that it's an awkward situation at times, when you may have a situation in which you have the student's rights as opposed to the student's parents' rights. And if I can divorce all of that from the human issue, the emotional issues, the very serious issues, if I can only look at it from a legal and financial perspective, I will tell you that if I have to defend a decision on the basis of the school district, I would much rather be defending your decision not to tell a parent than defending a decision in which we do not honor the transgender student's status, and we could be sued for discrimination. So, that doesn't mean that, you know, like I said, if a student says, "I don't want my parent to know," that that's an automatic no. It's a process, there's gonna be a lot of counseling involved. And I would think that more often than not, parents probably will be notified, and that probably will happen in consultation with the student, and probably the student, I think in most cases, will be on board. But there's flexibility in the policy.
Thank you, Vic, are there any other comments in regard to this policy? Then we'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Soson?
Yes.
Mrs. Statts?
Yes.
Mrs. Trheo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve the attached resolutions, retirements, and resignations as listed, including Kathy Vogel, teacher of special education who has been with us since 1987, Margaret Nemec, reading specialist at Woodford Road School, who's been with us since 1994, Barbara Umar, teacher of art from Hillsborough Middle School, who has been with us since 1993. And we thank each of those teachers for their dedicated service to our district. Also, resignations is listed, to approve transfers and changes in assignments, revision of the interim supervisor of health and physical education's motion, approve revised leaves of absences, and approve appointments of an acting maintenance supervisor, acting maintenance foreman, teacher, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, coaches, co-curricular advisors, and substitutes as attached. Also approve mentors and buddy list, approve student-teacher, and pre-approve extrapery coverage, as well as approve extrapery coverage and sixth-period coverage. Also approve summer enrichment programs for staff, and to approve the policy for first reading, which is the equal employment, anti-discrimination practice policy, as well as approve policy for second reading, including school district security policy. We have more? No.
15?
Yep.
Okay, are we there yet?
Yes, we are there.
Okay, may I have a motion for items in the Human Resources area, 11.1 through 11.15, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joyce. Are there any questions? Yes.
So, I'm not gonna separate, I'll vote yes on it, but on the equal employment one, there are two paragraphs that are opposed to each other. One paragraph, and I don't have, I don't know if I printed it, if I did, I'll tell you. Yeah, the second paragraph of the actual policy, you know, the board will ensure all persons, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, age, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, will have bias-free access to employment. Then the bolded part, which I guess is the part where Then the bolded part, which I guess is the part we're adding, says, "The Board's going to encourage minority businesses, women businesses, enterprises, and labor surplus areas, firms to submit bids to be considered for the awarding of contracts." Is, is this a bias? Is this a neutral policy or is it not? How can you have both paragraphs and the same thing? Mr. Lapiera, tell, gives you wisdom.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it for the first time, but as I recall, so this is encouraging various businesses, including minority-owned businesses, women business enterprises, et cetera, to submit bids to be considered for the awarding of contracts. But there's no, there's no specific set aside here. It's, it's merely an encouragement. I mean, in the end, you still have to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And so obviously, frankly, from the school district's point of view, we want everyone to bid on our projects because we want to get the lowest possible price. So...
It just seemed like the two paragraphs, the paragraph above it is, lays it out the way I'd like to. Just leave it. All right, but, all right, I'm just, I'm just going to go yes. Anyway, go ahead, roll call.
Okay. Any other comments? Did you have them?
Yeah, can we separate 11.7?
Item 11.7?
Yes.
Okay. So we will move forward with the vote on all items except for 11.7. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now a motion and second on item 11, 11.7?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any comments that you would like to make? Okay. Roll call, please.
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Abstained.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's approval of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly bills lists, odd and transfers, accept a donation from Teresa Moda of a full-size violin, and Scott McCain of two film SLR cameras and lenses for the use in the Hillsborough High School Photography and Advanced Photography classes. And we thank both of them for their generous donation. Also approve the policy for first reading of eligible, eligibility of resident and non-resident pupils. Also approve the policies for second reading of unsafe school choice option, commercial driver's license, controlled substance, and alcohol use testing, and procurement procedures for the school nutrition program. Also to approve our annual audit and to approve travel reimbursement expenses, approve the healthcare waiver, as well as the tentative budget and the enrollment adjustment resolution.
Okay. I'll take a motion in second for items 12.1 through 12.10.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a question. On 12.7, the travel reimbursement expense, is this for the purpose of building the budget for 2019-20?
Mr. Mahmood, would you mind just addressing the purpose of the resolution on travel expenses?
So, Mr. Hio, the, the maximum expenditure is not necessarily the budgeted amount, but we will not exceed that amount. So we're just saying, in essence, we will not exceed the 105. We are required by statute, but it doesn't mean necessarily that we were going to budget between tentative and final the 105.
And this motion is required by the accountability regulations. We just have to set a max.
We set a max, so that does not mean that we're actually going to use the max of $105,000?
Correct. Correct. And we, we usually don't use the max.
So I also want to clarify that staff includes all staffs, administrative, teachers, et cetera?
Yes.
It's all, all travel.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like actually to object, I mean, I know we have to, to approve this number as a maximum, but I have stated before that I do think that we should have a moratorium on all professional travel that's outside of contracts.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions about the operations agenda? We're good? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Okay. One other thing, I know that tonight there were not really that many specifics shared in terms of what will happen now as we go forward. But in prior years when we've had to look at the budget, we've had many different scenarios that have been presented before voting on a budget. And this year, that has not happened. We have not had any tentative scenarios presented. I can go back and look at YouTube's of watching the board meetings and looking at, "This is a possibility, this is a possibility, this is a possibility." And I think that if we're talking potentially program cuts or teacher cuts and that was shared with people in our community, that it may have been a different turnout. Because every parent cares when it's about their child. And unfortunately, we live in a society now that unless it affects you personally, you don't do anything about it. So I think that if those scenarios would have been laid out on the table, the turnout may have been different. I've sat at board meetings and have listened to parents talk about, "Please don't cut band, please don't do this," and they come out in forces. When you talk athletics, they come out in forces. And, you know, I spoke at the coffee meeting about pay for play with sports. We don't have pay for play, but we do have booster clubs. And I looked at the booster club description today, and it is not mandatory. However, if I would like my child to be considered for the senior award, I have to participate in the booster club every single year. If I want my child to be considered for the senior, I don't know if it's the award or the, um, what's the word? The scholarship, thank you, the scholarship. I have to participate every year. So that is a pay to play. And then I looked at what the booster club provides. They did new uniforms last year. They, and I'm talking lacrosse, new uniforms, new nets for the field, coaches' stuff. So we do a form of pay to play. So I'm not really sure what that's going to look like, but I think if you would have really...
And honestly, Kelly, neither do we.
I know, but I think if you would have...
And that's why we need some time to look into these things and see what the impacts of our decisions are going to mean.
I appreciate you saying that, but I have to say, each one of you up there is very, very smart, or else you wouldn't be there.
Thank you.
And so, but here's the thing. I know that there's a plan somewhere. There are ideas that have been laid out on the table. And maybe if some of those ideas would have been shared, just a little bit more transparency, this could have been very different. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Idorf, 286 Wildflower Lane. I have several questions for the board and a couple of comments to previous presenters. My question is, I'm looking at financial reports that have been submitted to state, and you quoted $15,000 per student cost, or something like that. According to your own statements, it's $18,000. I'm looking at financial disclosure. Now, number of students is actually down compared to 10 years ago. We went from 7,500 students to 7,300 students. And number of teachers has actually stayed exactly the same and actually went down. And teacher lost some of the administrative, some of the teacher assistant. So that is understandable, you know, number of students. Surprisingly, number of admin staff went down significantly. We went from 1,000 total reported employees, full-time, to 1,144, and all of it is not teachers. So I would like to hear why is your numbers on a board were not represented in what you submitted to the state? Maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
I don't know what report you're looking at.
Would you like to?
Sure.
The report that appeals a minute to New Jersey State of Education. Bring it straight from their website. You can hear it.
It's the CAFER.
It's the CAFER, yeah. The CAFER, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I don't, I don't know what he's comparing it to and if it...
Now, I do not know if that's correct information or not. This information I got, this is public report that's available out there. I have no clue which part of it is actually correct or not. But based on that, we actually hired 144 admin staff and basically not a single teacher in the last 10 years, whereas the number of students actually went down. So that would be interesting to see what, how you answer that. Now...
I'm sorry, go ahead. Excuse me. What we may want to do, because the CAFER, what you're referring to is our audit report, what you may want to do is actually schedule some time with Mr. Mahmood, and he can actually walk you through, answer your questions about enrollment differentials, about hiring, about debt, about all of the different areas that are listed within the CAFER. So that...
I would love that.
As you can, as you can see, it's a very complex document. But it is the document that describes, and every district in the state of New Jersey goes through the, goes through this particular process of an independent audit, and the audit filings become public information.
Yes.
And I applaud you for getting that document, looking through it. I see you're highlighting it as well. But in order to answer your question specifically, you would need to schedule some time with our business.
I would love, I would stay after the meeting to make sure, or maybe I should...
Please do, we'll get your contact information.
Once again, I'm working 50, 60 hours a week. It's really hard to, even, I know I haven't showed up to a lot of previous meetings, so I'm probably in new phase. But we all work to support our family. And I want to make sure you know, I have three kids in the school system, so I'm the first one to know how important it is. But I'm also an owner and I have to pay taxes. So once again, tagging responsibilities. And I'm the first one who want to keep the school listing as the top 100 schools in the world, in America. No question about it. Now, what are we going to do about it?
In the world was accurate, by the way, what you said, "in the world."
So now, class sizes. Class sizes matter in K through third grade, pre-K through third, fourth grade. Class sizes after that do not have a big impact on the quality of education. I studied in a normal Russian school where number of students were between 30 and 40, and I was about five years ahead of average American high school students by the time he graduated.
One person at a time.
Right, so, no, we, there is, there is a cutoff. Like if there was more than 50 students in a class, obviously, it's not going to work. But there is, there is, there is a playroom where you do not lose the quality of education while increasing the class sizes in high school and 7, 8 grade of middle school. There is, there is, there is a little of a playroom there without affecting the quality of education. So, once again, I came from the same system you did. There is, right, it's a different society, but...
I'm sorry, the speaker needs to...
But, sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to hold everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Did you want, did you want this book back, or do you...
No, we don't need it. We have plenty of CAFERS.
Um, I have, I have, well, he has highlighted a few things, which I find very interesting myself. First, I would like to respond to the fact of cost per pupils. There are multiple costs per pupil that the state evaluates. Some of them include only the core functions of a school district, and others are the entire total cost per pupil, which includes things that not every district has, like transportation. So the number you're looking at here, I believe, is the full cost per pupil in Hillsborough, whereas, because we are a district that has transportation, has, has other things. So I'll say that about the cost per pupil, but again, you know, we can contact our auditor and verify that. In this list, where you have a figure of our staff going up significantly from 1,082 to 1,144, and pardon my eyesight, I see two problems right away. There is a number in administrative support, which historically has been 1, 1, 0, 0, 4, 4, 4, 4, 3, and then 32. My guess is that that's a typo, because there's no way that we went from having, you know, three people in a category. Am I right?
You're absolutely right.
Thank you. I'm always right.
Once again, like I said, I suspect there may be some misinformation.
Correct? Okay.
But we just need clarification, that's all.
Okay. And the other thing is, like, you have a transportation number that went up. The transportation number may have gone up because we...
Private contractors.
We can't get private contractors to do some of the routes that we need and had to hire them. However, there was a savings, which otherwise would have gone to a private company. And this is what I need to caution the public. When you look at a budget, if you don't know other decisions that are going on, for example, in special ed, we have kids, you know, going to schools with outside tuition, and you could see spikes in those lines from year to year. If they come back into district, there may be additional personnel lines. If you don't know what's going on, it's very hard to read our budget. And I just ask for, you know, some consideration of the fact that we have professionals who go through all of this stuff.
Right. This is extremely complex system.
And it's complicated for all of us, so...
Some place along line on Hillsborough, Facebook, I saw somebody mention about the salary of superintendent and principals. I want to say for what they're doing and the amount of responsibility, they're underpaid, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you very much for that comment.
Right. Because the amount of responsibility and the complexity of system is extremely bad. What I think, once again, would you, what happened is, a lot of people didn't vote against the $5 million increase. A lot of people voted against full day kindergarten, because the presentation that was put together to show the offset that we would have gotten from state was not clear. And a lot of people got very confused. And they voted against, not so much the increase of $5 million, they voted against full day kindergarten, because they did not feel they need to support it, because it was something extra that not required and doesn't really affect the quality of education overall. So that's just my personal observation, talking to a lot of parents, and I know quite a few of them.
Yeah.
So like, I'm just saying, like, the information you put together showing the offset that we would have gotten from state were not clear, and it was just a lot of Excel spreadsheet, and that's not how you want to present the financial information. I should know, that's what I do for a living. So the information that you, like, the old Excel, tons and tons of Excel, were not clear to a lot of people, and even, even people who work with finances had a hard time understanding what was on, so quite a few of them. I'm just saying. All right?
Thank you very much.
Donna Zidler, 7th New Canes Court. Alex pretty much summed up the, in his last part, what I wanted to say. We didn't vote no to covering the status quo. We voted no against full day K.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry. We voted no against full day K. I believe it would have been a different outcome if you had just asked to cover the budget deficit. And I'm disappointed that the board decided to, to ask for more at the risk of our teachers and our current staff. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thomas DeBelly, 9 Upper Neshanet Court. I just wanted to say, I really did enjoy and appreciate all the comments that were made this evening by board members and the public. And I just, you know, I believe in the idea of, again, as I said earlier, the idea of freedom of speech and, and again, instead of lobbing, you know, grenades at one another, I think the only way we're going to move forward truly is to listen to people and not do that. I'm sorry that a particular board member has been singled out this evening. I think that's wrong. And again, I think we could move the needle much farther. I know, I am not, my opinion is not the most popular in this room, or it wasn't when everyone else was here, or the majority of everyone else was here. But I do know that that's the only way we're going to move forward, is to, to not lob grenades at one another, but rather talk to each other in a civilized manner. And I want to thank the board for putting up with me these last few months. There's nothing against any of you. I just felt very strongly, as I have in past, and many other things as well, but I want to thank you guys for doing what you do. It's not an easy job, and you should all be, you should all be grateful for and happy that you, you've chosen to do such a hard job. I should know, running for public office for this position three times is not easy. And again, thank you for all that you do, and let's, let's sit down and talk, and then we can figure this out together. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas, and we appreciate what you do, too. You keep us on our toes.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. I can appreciate Thomas's sentiment regarding how we move forward, but I do need to note that we're judged by our actions, and the actions that we take, we are accountable for them, except in the situation where we're cutting 50 people. Because those 50 people showed up every day and gave their best to our students and gave their best to our kids, and those actions aren't going to member, matter when this budget comes through. So as much as I appreciate the sentiment, it falls hollow when I have to take into consideration that 50 people, 50 families, many of whom are in Hillsborough, who are our neighbors, they will not have a job once this budget is struck, once the new school year comes around, and it is by no fault of their own, by none of their actions. It's actually completely contrary to their actions. Which brings me to my next point, though, which is, at one point, while board members were making comments, it was said that we're seeking to pass a budget that doesn't cut 50 jobs. Yet what was presented is that we are cutting 50 jobs. So which one is it?
I believe that it is in the best interest of the school district to minimize the number of cuts. I was here in 2010. We started with a list of 88 cuts, and through a variety of measures, we were able to reduce that list significantly. It was still devastating. It was my most horrible year on the board. We have struggled to come back to where we are. But the wonderful thing I learned over the years, I've been on this board for 15 years now, and this district has always been resilient, and its strength is in its people, and we will go on. And we will keep moving forward. And all I could say is, if you have great ideas that would minimize that, and I say that to you as, you know, a union official, as well as all of your members, as well as every member of the public, we will look at every single good idea that helps us minimize the number of staff people who will be impacted by that. And even within staff reductions, we're going to try to utilize whatever attrition would have happened normally to be able to minimize the number of real people as opposed to positions. So we're going to do our best. Nobody up here enjoys letting people go. I've always taken, and I think everybody here has always taken, great pride in the school district. We know what the teachers do. We've always stood up for low class sizes in our district. And we do have another thing... Are you putting that timer on me?
I am, yes.
He should, right?
I am.
And our, our first two items in our code of ethics are something I emphasize every chance I get. One of them is that we must uphold and enforce all laws. However, the second one, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. There is nothing that has happened that changes that. So have some faith, work with us, and let's see what we could do for the kids.
Well, I appreciate that, but the fact is, is that we started with 88 and we ended at 66 in those years, which is significant, the decrease, you know, to save 22 jobs. I don't...
That was a $7 million cut that we were doing back then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, that is nothing to look down on. But the fact of the matter remains, is even if we're doing this through attrition, that's still going to increase class size. Because while those aren't, quote, "real people," those are still people who should be in the classroom, that is still impacting the ratio of students to staff. So it still does that. And we've had a business of balancing budgets on attrition for years, and that's finally coming home to roost.
A lot of things are coming home to roost.
We need to stop doing that. And we need to take action and not wait for other districts to do things. We need to take responsibility for our districts. Now, we heard about Dr. Schiff, and about yourself, and everyone else who testifies and speaks to legislators, and that's great. Our members are doing it, too. Our members are some of the most active in Somerset County in terms of lobbying legislators, meeting with them, sending emails to them, phone calls. We're on the front lines of this. But we're not waiting for another district to do it for us, and neither should you. If there's a lawsuit out there that has even the slightest chance of prevailing to save jobs and give a better education for these kids because S2 is flawed, then join it. Become part of it.
Okay.
And the other point that I would like to clarify is, I heard that one of the priorities is CUSAC. That one of the priorities is to make sure that we maintain our CUSAC rating. But I find it hard to believe that with budget cuts and staffing, and what I would imagine programs and curriculum and everything else that we're going to cut, that we'll be able to maintain our CUSAC rating. So I'm curious to hear if the board actually believes that we'll be able to be CUSAC compliant in the coming year in light of the cuts that are proposed.
Good question. Remains to be seen. That's all I could say about that right now, because we just don't know.
To be honest, I think it can be seen. I think that we will not be compliant, is what I would imagine, based off of the cuts that are proposed. I don't see how that's possible. The question was, what's CUSAC?
In simple terms...
Our state monitoring process to ensure that we are compliant with laws, codes, regulations.
Thank you.
Ken Hestag, 628 Danley Lane. So you've got a tough job ahead. Anyway, one comment. With respect to the comments that took issue with posts on Facebook by one board member, I hope we don't take our eye off the ball here. Those posts had no malice, but simply served to inform the public. The only repeated comments made in a prior public meeting, they also simply made public views that she had planned to express at the meeting on March 4th, which was canceled. And as we all know, that was an issue of concern to the public in itself. I doubt absence of this board member's posts would have resulted in a different outcome, but regardless, she was at least being transparent and simply making her view public, which I'm sure many, which I and I'm sure many other residents thank her for. Finally, we all know how important diversity is in every aspect of life. Diversity of thought is no less important on this board. In fact, I'm sure it'll be critical in helping lead to a successful solution here. Hopefully, you will all move forward now with the task at hand of working together to solve this. I'm confident you will. Thank you.
Amy Salinger, HDA Treasurer. I just wanted to just reiterate that I've heard a lot tonight about, we're going to do everything we can. We're working, we're planning, we're doing this, we're doing that, to try to do what we can with the 50 jobs. And with all due respect, I ask you, why wasn't it already planned if the referendum fails? I find that baffling. As the treasurer of my association, I have to bring forth a budget to my members every year, and this past year, I presented three budgets, because we had different scenarios that we may have had to face. So there is scenario one, scenario two, scenario three. So again, just with all due respect, it sounds like we assumed it was going to pass and didn't really have a plan for what to do if it didn't, and now we're planning at the last minute. I hope we can do it, but I just question, you know, the, the big picture view and the entire planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would only say to Amy's comment, that the board has been looking at possibilities of a budget defeat for two months, and have looked at various items, but has not made any final decisions. And honestly, you look at this through a different lens when a referendum doesn't pass versus prior to. And I can, I can tell you, this is very, very difficult work for the board up here. And they are compassionate people, and we're trying to do the right thing. But the challenge is significant. Can't absorb a $5,000, a $5 million cut in our budget with no, with very little surplus left. Difficult decisions are going to be made. I think it's important that the public has a voice on some of those decisions, too, and that the board is influenced by those decisions as well. It informs our, our decision-making as we go down the path. We have to be very cognizant also, that people don't find out about the loss of a job through a public board meeting, that we have that compassion to have those individual conversations with those people. I think that's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further public comments?
I have a comment. Mrs. Haas, correspondence.
Would you like to give a report? Go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I've received correspondence from Assemblyman Roy Fryman. In a previous newsletter, he asked for input from the constituents, and it was in a survey format. And he shared that in his newsletter, he sent out a newsletter. He also talked about how, in December and February, how he supported the schools through the art program in his office here in Hillsborough, showcasing the beautiful artwork that was created by the students at the, in the school district. And I have to say, it was wonderful. He also was talking about the bills that are going to affect Hillsborough that he has on the floor, his legislation to help rectify grants, 25% rebate of property taxes for seniors for the first-time home buyers, financial relief for those carrying student debt. So he talks about the different bills that are on the floor, retirement tax exemptions, and small business sick leave. He also volunteered in February for Read Across America. So it seems that Mr. Fryman is, Assemblyman Fryman, is quite active, and he is very positive in wanting to support our schools in Hillsborough.
Okay. All right.
I have a, I have a comment.
Are we good?
Yes. So in looking, today is March 18th. We have one more board meeting in March, is that correct, or no? This is actually the last one. Then we have two in April.
The next Monday.
This is the last one for March, is that correct?
No.
And we have no further committee meetings?
That was canceled.
Yeah, it is. Our next meeting's in April, April 8.
Okay, so, so here's, here's...
And we're going to have to, I'm sorry, we're going to have to reschedule our committee meetings and move that up at least a week.
I think we also need to have additional committee meetings. I really do not think that having one committee meeting and then one more public board meeting before we vote on April, the last Monday in April, on a public, public final budget is acceptable. Mrs. Stotts and I have had, I mean, I, we have discussed budget areas. I have had multiple pages of budget areas for review that really have had no comments from my fellow board members. I, I really don't understand why we do not discuss our priorities and our budget from the ground up, starting from zero. And I, and I talked about the things that were, that should be a priority, which is academics.
Go ahead.
It's, it's, I don't even know what to say, Judy. I mean, it's, it's really frustrating when I'm sitting up here, and I am the lone voice saying that the plan was a bad plan, and I'm trying to help the district by talking about what prior, what things that we should offer our district, and you're rolling your eyes at me.
What, what, you need to understand, and I'd much rather talk to you about this privately, is that everybody else on the board who voted disagreed with that assessment. And, you know, at some point, and it is part of the Board of Ed's process, is that you go with the will of the majority after a vote has been taken.
That's not...
And it's not as if everybody else on the board does not have an opinion and have suggestions, and we go through them. And that is our process.
So just to clarify, when we were at Somerset County School Boards Association, I actually did think that once the board had voted seven to one, that that was the will of the board, and that that was what I should just support. And then our field service representative said that I did not have to support that, and that I could vocalize my opposition to it.
People have freedom of speech, Jean. You know that.
I absolutely do, but I'm very frustrated in that we go to committee and we discuss items that we think should be considered for the budget, and the reasons are given, well, we can't do that. We can't do that. It doesn't work like that. And it's absolutely frustrating, because...
We have a collective bargaining agreement. We cannot impose various items in three months' time. That does not happen. And we honestly have a lot of work to do, and we need to have productive discussions.
So we have one committee meeting scheduled for April?
No.
No, I mean, each committee has one meeting scheduled prior to the final vote. I mean, our last operations committee meeting was like five hours.
Correct.
And we still had no conclusion at the end of it.
Because work needed to be done. It took place within two days of this vote. And the bottom line is, I and various other board members and various members of the administration have been working 24/7 for the last couple of days to do what we can to deal with this. And there were all-day meetings today. This is our major priority now, and they will come back to us as soon as they have some clarity in terms of a recommendation. This does not mean that the board does not have a role in that. We have all given some degree of input, and all of that's being included.
And all of these inputs, I'm sorry, Jean, all of these inputs start from what we were at last year, and we're cutting. There's been no discussion in saying, you know what, we do need to give the students X, Y, and Z, but maybe, you know, like, Z1 is like, you know, lower on our priority list, and maybe we should cut that. And that Z1 might have less impact on jobs. We don't talk about that.
We are looking at every non-job impactful item possible. But we can't make up the numbers. Our budget has to balance. We can't say raise fees and say that the number for additional fees could be $1 million. They cannot. So we have to look at a broad spectrum of possible cuts to the budget. And as I have said multiple times tonight, we'll do the best we can to keep those cuts away from kids.
So then that's the problem, because if we are able to find the money for saving 50 jobs or some number close to that, then basically the public is going to say, well, why didn't you do that sooner? I mean, it seems disingenuous to say like, well, vote for the referendum, it passes, and so there we save 50 jobs. But now that the referendum fails, oh, by the way, we can also save 50 jobs. I just don't understand that logic. And I really do have a problem with the fact that we did not present a tentative budget prior to this referendum. We should have presented two budgets, one if the referendum failed and one if it passed, so that people could actually see what cuts were being made. And I still claim that the reason the budget was not, the tentative budget was not given is because we wouldn't do what we said we were going to do. We were going to find other areas to trim.
About the budget process.
It's just really not fair that the way this referendum was worded is...
Can I ask you a question? I was given the impression that we were going to add more committee meetings. Is that true?
I can do it.
I can hear you.
The question was, should we add more committee meetings? And the answer is absolutely. We'll have as many committee meetings as we need in order for the board to feel comfortable with your decision-making.
Vic, do you want to address the budget process?
And I can talk a little bit tentative. So Jean, the tentative budget right now, we wouldn't come out with anything until now that the board has casted the tentative budget. It is now an official document. We will be submitting it, as Mrs. Haas said, to the county tomorrow. The county will, we are not allowed to advertise this tentative budget until the county approves it. That is by law, by the way. That's written into law. So the board has to, because here's what can happen. The county, the executive county superintendent has a major say in our budget. They look line item by line item. And they may see something that is an inefficiency or something that they feel is not something they want to approve. They can turn that down, so this tentative budget is no longer a tentative budget. It's a budget that has to be revised by this board. So once, and I think Dr. Schiff has said that he's going to address the executive county superintendent and say, can you rush our approval so that the sooner we can get this approval, the sooner we can post stuff on our website so that people can see what this budget looks like. They actually could see the details of the budget, and that's our goal. That level of transparency is something the operations committee had discussed, and I think we want to expedite that. The community needs to see what this looks like. Now that the budget is adopted, tomorrow we submit it, the superintendent will be contacting the executive county superintendent, who, by the way, they review all Somerset County budgets and the Hunterdon County school districts. So we're going to ask for some kind of a, you know, expedited review so that we can present this to the public, they can see what this thing looks like. And also, the board can start to say, now we have a real tentative budget that was approved. But by law, and Vic can verify this, we do not have the right to advertise this budget until the county says yes. That's written in law.
Can I ask a question? We wouldn't be able to do anything that's even like unofficial? We couldn't even do something like that ahead of that date?
Could I? I would just say that as far as the budget is concerned, the county doesn't even give you the budget, the user-friendly budget that you can print on the website. They don't even give that to you until they've given the stamp of approval and the budget software that's through the, that's through the website that the DOE maintains. So there can be any number of ideas and priorities that are being discussed, but until you get an approved budget back, the statute, I think it's 6A 23A, excuse me, the regulation, 6A 23A-9.1B, I believe, says that you cannot publish that, you cannot advertise that budget until it's been approved. So you really can't go out and say, well, it might be this, it might be that. We don't know until it's approved.
So then I have a clarification question on this, because the budget that we were given on Friday, it assumed that we were taking all the waivers and the 2% cap. Is that correct? So the list that's the tentative list is, I don't think any of our committees have even been in agreement with this. I mean, it's been all over the place. So my question is, if, when the county executive superintendent approves this budget, you know, or when they receive it tomorrow, and then they review it, and then they approve it, whatever we get back, is that what we're bound to, what we're showing them all these papers? Or is it just the number?
Yeah, if I can help out here. The tentative budget is just that. It's tentative. It can change in six weeks. The board can make adjustments to it. Ayman has to submit a budget to the county based upon what we know our revenues are going to be. And that's what we just approved here, where the waivers for healthcare was the waiver for enrollment and was taxing at 2%. So that's the dollar amount that we approved. Now, Ayman has to complete his process, get that approved, and then we can advertise the budget. But during that period of time, there's going to be changes, adjustments, based upon what the will of the board is. And that's fully expected, that this tentative budget, especially under the circumstances, may not be what the final budget is going to look like.
So I actually, I have to...
With the exception of the bottom line, I'm sorry, with the exception of the bottom line.
So I really do have to agree. Being on the board in 2017, 2018, the six weeks sounds like it's a long time, but whatever we approve tonight and whatever this tentative list is, doesn't ever seem to change very much. And that's my biggest concern, is that this train has started rolling, and all of the suggestions that we've given in committee have just, have not been addressed or been, they've just not been addressed.
Judy?
Yes.
Perhaps you just want to make a note of what you just said.
That's out of order. That's out of order.
There's no further public comment.
Public comments, sorry.
She's not allowed to speak.
Go ahead, Chris.
I've heard quite often, both at the board table and from the public, starting the budget from zero, and I'm never quite sure exactly what people mean. But the way I look at it as, conception of whatever that means, really doesn't get us anywhere, because we start every school year or every budget cycle, and, you know, they committed to a huge number that we aren't going to change. So the concept of starting from zero when we're already locked in at probably, when you figure, forgetting exactly what the positions are, the number of teachers plus or minus 10%, the amount of our benefits cost, fuel costs to the extent we can see. But there's so many numbers that we don't have a choice, because we're already committed. When we negotiate a three-year contract, we know what that next year is going to be. So to say to start from zero, I guess, I can't find a basis for that, because we're already committed to way above zero. So I think that's part of my confusion when I hear that. The other problem, and I'd love if somebody, Lisa, maybe you may be the best one for this. The idea that we can cut some program or something that we do for students, I cannot think of a single thing that we would cut or say not do, Z1, that doesn't have staff associated with it. And if I cut that program, sorry, didn't mean to hit the mic there, if I cut that program, I'm effectively cutting some portion of staff. Now, if we're talking about a club or something else, it's not a full staff member. But if you want to cut anything, everything we do has people associated with the process, whether it's educating, support staff, whatever it is, every single thing we do has people in it. So to say that I'm going to cut this program, but I'm not going to hurt staff, I don't understand how that works, because every single thing we do has people associated. And if I don't have a debate team, Bob's still there, never mind, if I don't have a football team, okay, there are people associated with all that. There are people who are either losing a stipend or losing a halftime job or losing something. I don't want that to happen to those people, but I can't find a program that we have that doesn't have staff attached to it. So when I cut that program, because we say we don't want it, because we want to use that money to protect the staff, we didn't. We just cut staff. So this idea that we can go through cutting all these programs and not affect any head count, I just can't get that math to work in my head. Lisa, is there anything that we do that's a program, something we provide to our kids that has no staff associated with delivering it, that wouldn't be impacted if we cut the program? So how do we cut programs and not impact staff? I'd love to know how. I'd love to do it. But everything we do, this is a people, well, we hate to call ourselves a business, but part of what we do, we're a business, we're running a business, we have a budget, we have jobs that have to be done. Everything we do is a people business. We're not creating widgets where I can replace one machine with a much faster machine and save money on my widgets. Everything we do is a people process. So the idea that we can cut some program and not affect staff, I just don't get it. And when I hear people come up and say to us, you should cut all these programs, but keep the teachers, keep the staff, how do you do that? When every single thing we do has a person who delivers that, who no longer has the task and job of delivering the program that we just cut?
And I will add to what you say. In addition to staff members being affected by that, children will be affected by any program that disappears from this district.
I understand that. But my point is, I keep hearing...
No, I'm agreeing and adding to your point.
But my point is, to a lot of the people who, not just here at the board meeting, but in public forums outside of our board meetings, there's this idea of you should cut this program, cut that program, cut this program, but don't touch the staff. And I just, for people who are suggesting that, I'd like to understand how, in an environment where everything that gets done is done by people, if you're going to stop doing something, how that doesn't impact staff. And I'm excluded in the student part, because yes, it impacts students. But the justification that I see in the public is, well, if you just cut these programs, you could save staff. It doesn't work that way. And this is why we struggle with this. And when we hear from the public, do X, Y, and Z, because it'll save staff, they're then mad at us, because we didn't save staff. Well, how do we do that? That's what I want to hear from somebody in the public, is how do we cut these programs and not have an impact to staff who delivered that program? I'd love to hear it. I just don't see how that happens.
And as this process is going through, we're still getting requests and letters from people who want to add to our programming.
Wow.
You know, we, there was a group of kids from this school who did a very professional PowerPoint and sent it to every board member about adding a group of world languages to our curriculum. Well, world languages cost a lot of money, because you have to create a curriculum, you have to find a teacher, you have to hire a teacher, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But, I mean, one of the bright lights for me of this last week is that our kids are still thinking about improving our school system. And it breaks my heart that we can't go ahead and do more things. But we'll do the best we can, and we've all made that commitment.
Can I say something?
Yes, Jean.
It isn't that there's just, there's staff and programs, though. I think maybe some people are using the word programs generically as anything other than staff, maybe, but there are things that we can cut back on that would not be reduction staff. And I've heard some people make some suggestions, and maybe they're not perfect, but, you know, maybe address how we can do busing to athletic practices that are off-site. You know, I don't want to get into the weeds about it now, but those are some things that would not affect staffing.
But, I'm sorry, but there was a bus driver on that bus, wasn't there? Did he get paid? Look, every little piece, people say, I just heard someone say, aw, come on. Every little piece of this, there was a bus driver. If we, I'm not saying we shouldn't come back on that, but the reality is, there's a bus driver who no longer is driving that route, which means he's not getting paid for driving that route. So it's still, and there's a lot of little things we can do, but every one of those little things slices a little bit off somebody.
And in addition to that, like, that's a good point. But in addition to that, maybe we can cut back on some supplies, or, you know, travel that requires airfare or overnight stays on the behalf of administration. Those are things that I think, but, having said that, no way is that going to replace cutting 50 staff members. But hopefully, that'll lower that number.
I wanted to address... We just don't want to give the wrong impression. We just don't want to give the wrong impression. People need to understand, you know, what is possible.
May I address Chris's point about the everything is staff? I understand that concept, but I really have a problem when I see the tentative list, and it's our core mission. Like, to me, it's like, we make our, almost our untouchables, that these areas should not have any reduction in staff or in budget. And then you have, that's your tier one, and then you've got your support to the tier one, and then you've got like, then you've got everything else that is not mandated by law, and then you cut from that. I mean, I just really cannot see how we can cut from our core mission. I just, the other things that, like, you know, and we can decide what we think is the secondary tier of wants and not needs. I mean, math, English, science, social studies, like, all those things are our needs. We have to provide those things.
We have never been a district that just provided four subjects. We have always been a comprehensive school district that not only cared about its educational program, but its extracurricular program, its athletic program, all as a part of a comprehensive program that would provide for all of our children to find some way to excel and find some way to feel good about themselves and to reach their maximum potential. Not everybody's good at English. Those people may excel at math. Not everybody's good at math. They may find their niche in a science area. And many, many of our children do very well in the sports area. And many of our clubs, and I don't know if Mr. Fenster, yes, he's still there, every single club that that man runs is an educational experience better than a lot of classes. I'm happy to say and sorry to say at the same time.
So then here's an idea...
And I am not looking forward to giving up any of that, but we're going to have to find a way to find money.
But I think we have to streamline our, maybe not streamline, but we do need to do something about the decision-making process, where we will have to make some decisions about our priorities. But I think we have to streamline our, maybe not streamline, but we, we do need to do something about the decision-making process where we will have to make some decisions about our priorities. Instead of, well, let's do here, and here, and here, what are our priorities? I, I agree with what Jean's saying, and whether or not we agree on what those priorities are, we are gonna have, have to make a decision what our priorities are as opposed to, oh, where can we make the biggest cuts most efficiently or quickly? I have a concern about that.
And the process is, which you will see when you get the Manhattan phone book edition of the budget, is that our staff has been working on a budget since last October. Everybody came in with their requests, it got a first cut, it got a second cut, it got a third cut. Now I think we're working on the fourth cut, and, you know, the fourth cut will be a very significant cut. But at the same time, this is why we have our professionals, which is not to, which is not to diminish the role of the board, but we look to our professionals to make a recommendation to us, and then we go forward and provide our input as well. We've put our input in at every stage of that process. But as Chris has said, there is a significant part of our budget that does not change from year to year. And, you know, unfortunately, that requires in a situation like this for us to go forward in the manner that we are. But I have to assure you, these people have been working exceptionally hard, and I'm sure you know that, so, yeah.
Oh, I, I, every single person affiliated with education works much harder than most people realize. I definitely, whether or not I, we all agree with each other, I think we all acknowledge that everybody works very, very hard.
So we'll move forward, yes?
I have another comment.
What's that?
I have another comment. I, I really do have a problem with the way the budget process is working, and I do understand that the administration is working to, to identify areas for cutting, but I don't understand why we don't involve the staff, like, I mean, like the teachers. I mean, for example, I'm gonna give you an example. When we go to committee, we get-
Excuse me. We have a labor management collaborative effort, which meetings you went to.
Went to one meeting.
Our teachers meet regularly with our administration to discuss issues that we are working together on. Every single curriculum is written by teachers with the help of their area supervisor. I mean, it's like 11, you know, it's almost 11 o'clock. I, I really can't get into that here, but I think it's a mistake to assume that teachers don't have any input in the education process of our district.
That's not what I said. What I said is, I want to have the teachers to have input into which areas to cut, because when I look at the list, that's not what I see. I'm just, I, I, I don't even know how-
I will be very happy to make an offer to our teachers. Please provide us any suggestions that you have.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes.
Robin DeVincen's-
No, we can't have that. We're done, we're done. Order of business. We can't have any, no, we don't, we don't. We cannot, we cannot close that. We have to follow the format of the board.
Okay. I'll be happy to stay and talk to you.
May I just say a final comment?
That is out of order at this point. We cannot have a discussion publicly.
Let me just also suggest that during my presentation, I shared that on our website, there's actually a very eas, very easy way for anyone, teachers, staff, community members, seniors, to share directly with every board member what their thoughts are. And we actually have received suggestions from our staff, Jean, so we're, we're getting some of that input, and I hope we can encourage our staff to continue to do that.
I would just like to say-
You cannot take that information.
If I could, that I think it's getting late, we're all getting tired, and this is reminiscent of 2009 when we had these problems.
10.
It tears at the fiber of the community. Please don't let this happen. We all respect each other's views. I think what we need to do as a board is go home, we have the budget, go home and write our priorities on paper and bring them to the next committee meeting. Then when we share all the priorities that we've thought of on paper, we'll be able to come to. I, we've been working on this for, I feel like forever. It's another dissertation.
It's continuous. It's a continuous process. The budget process never ends.
But at any rate, we've been doing this for months and months and talking about this, I feel like I'm hitting, hitting my head against the wall. If we all write down our priorities, come to the meeting with those priorities, it'll be much easier and clearer to see where we need to go.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you very much. And may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Start.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.